Yes, sir. Dr. Chase?
Present.
Ms. Decatur?
Here.
Ms. Egan?
Here.
Ms. Hazard?
Here.
Ms. Healy?
Here.
Mr. McCosker?
Here.
Ms. Young?
Here.
Superintendent, you have a quorum.
Would you please stand for the presentation of the national colors and the pledge of the allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to thank the colored guard troop cadets for being here tonight from the North Stafford High School Air Force Junior ROTC program. At this time, I ask for nominations for chairperson of the school board. As you know, a second is not required.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Jamie Decatur for chairman.
Mr. Superintendent, I'd like to nominate Ms. Trish. Ms. Trish Healy, sorry. I hit my button to... Hit my button.
Those in favor of Ms. Jamie Decatur as chairperson, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
I believe the nays were more than the ayes.
Please, please.
You need to call the board.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
Please call the board.
Please call the board.
Ms. Chase?
Nay.
Ms. Decatur?
What am I voting for?
On yourself.
Yourself. Yourself.
Sure.
Ms. Egan?
Yes.
Ms. Hazard?
Yes.
Ms. Healy?
No.
Mr. McCosker?
No.
Ms. Young?
Nay.
Dr. Kizner, the motion fails. Four to three.
Those in favor of Ms. Patricia Healy as chairperson, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
No.
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Yes.
Dr. Kizner, motion passes four to three.
Okay. Motion passes to the left and point. Ms. Healy as the chair. Congratulations.
Most important.
Gets the gavel back now. Hey, ow! What do I get me for?
I didn't touch you. All right. That brings us to the election and appointment of the board vice chairman. At this time, I ask for nominations for vice chairman.
I would like to nominate Sarah, Dr. Sarah Chase, as vice chair for the school board.
Second.
No seconds required.
Okay.
I'd like to nominate Jamie Decatur for vice chair.
Any other nominations? All right, we'll start with the nomination for Dr. Chase. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Dr. Chase?
Aye.
Ms. Decatur?
No.
Ms. Egan?
No.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Mr. McCosker?
Yes.
Ms. Young?
Absolutely, yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes four to three.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, point of privilege. Would I, can I have one minute so we can change seats and I can remove myself from the vice seat?
Oh, you don't want to sit next to me anymore.
I do want to sit next to you, but...
That's because I have this gavel.
Yes, but I want to give her the vice chair seat. Good job.
All right. Congratulations, Dr. Chase. Oh, that's right.
And Madam Chair, now that I have Dr. Chase's computer, I can, she's got a bunch of really smart things written down. So now I'm going to read them on her behalf.
Good luck with that.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Hazard.
He thinks ahead.
Yeah.
All right, that brings us to the appointment of the school board clerk and the deputy clerk. The superintendent has recommended Melissa Hall as clerk of the board and Olivia Branch as deputy clerk. Do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendation?
Motion to approve the recommendation for clerk and deputy clerk.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Young. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wow, that's great. Unanimous. Yes.
Welcome aboard.
All right, the motion passes. Congratulations, Ms. Hall and Ms. Branch. At this time, we entertain a motion for approval of the agenda. Ms. Egan?
Motion to approve with the following changes, please. I would like the superintendent's comments to be moved immediately following consent. And there seems to be some discussion on capping the public comment time to only include, to include the people who have signed up.
Ms. Hall, how many people do we have that have signed up?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, yes. That would, that would be approximately sixty, yeah, an hour or more or less.
So what do I say? I want to amend. I want to add to it.
Okay, okay. All right, so is that part of your motion to limit the public comment period to the twenty-one persons who have signed up?
Sure.
Okay, all right, and did you want to?
I want to, as Ms. Egan mentioned, I want to limit the number, but I also want to limit the number to Staffordians at the beginning of the meeting, rather than outside individuals.
My only issue with that is that we've got some teachers, teachers who don't live in Stafford that, if they're our employees, I would, I would like to hear from them.
Sure, yeah, definitely. So that will exclude teachers, but I would like individuals that are living in Stafford to be able to speak first.
I don't have a problem with that being added.
All right, now, if we're going to limit it to the twenty-one who have signed up, then we don't have to put that restriction on it at this point. That's something we can talk about when we have our, our meeting on Saturday. We're going to talk about order of business and our meetings generally. Do we want to, Ms. Young?
Yes.
The motion was to permit the twenty-one people who have signed up to speak, all twenty-one, regardless of where they're from. Would that be agreeable to you at this point?
For this one, but going forward, yes.
Okay, yes, we can talk about that on Saturday. Ms. Hall, will you make a note of that for our meeting on Saturday? All right, so the motion is to approve the agenda with a change to move the superintendent's comments up following the consent agenda prior to citizen comments and to limit the citizen comments to the twenty-one persons who have signed up. Okay, everybody? Well, if you, well, we have, we have a motion by Ms. Egan and are you seconding that, Ms. Young? Have you seconded that motion?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, okay, then discussion.
I have to say, because I said this last comment at my last meeting, I do think at some point, we have to address letting those who come speak their minds. And I am, as hard as it is, I do believe we have a somewhat more limited agenda tonight, and I don't know where people came from, and I feel that when, if we're changing the rules, if somebody came, and I know tonight, we're going to allow them to speak, I just feel like, because I made the same comment in December, that I think limiting debate, because there's a variety of topics now in front of us. In the past, we have had maybe one, I won't say controversial, but for the back of a better term, topic, but tonight, we have started on redistricting, we have other issues that may have come up, and I just feel tonight, I just, tonight, I just don't feel like I can vote in favor of limiting public comment.
Madam Chair, I'll withdraw my motion for the time limitation.
All right, so unlimited public comment. All right, yes, that's a good point, Ms. Decatur. Let's get started. So is that acceptable to you as a second? So the only change in the agenda would be to move the superintendent's comments to follow the consent agenda.
I have no problem with allowing everyone to speak, but I would like our Stafford residents to be able to speak first, and individuals that live outside of our area come after if they did not sign up already. That's all I'm saying.
Alter the motion, that's fine.
Yeah.
Is that acceptable to you? All right, so I guess after we get through the twenty-one people who have signed up, we can have two lines, one from Stafford and one from outside Stafford. And Stafford would include the county of Stafford, even if your address is Fredericksburg, or Falmouth, or Ruby, or wherever. All right, so we have a motion, second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, brings us to organizational business. We have, the first item is 5.01, adoption of the 2019 school board meeting schedule. For discussion purposes, can we have a motion?
I move that we accept the schedule.
We have a motion by Dr. Chase?
Second.
Second by Ms. Young. Our discussion, Ms. Hazard, did you want to discuss something?
I had just wanted to get more input. Dr. Kizner, I'm willing to even defer to you all. I had some concerns for us, for our summer meetings, with the first meeting being on July 9th, right after the July 4th holiday. I felt, I felt that that was a potential burden for staff to be prepared for our meeting, and I really would have, would like some of the input from our HR department of when they really think we need to be approving appointments over the summer, and I just wasn't sure if the ninth was the ideal month. Plus, I also thought that the, having our first meeting in August, being on the second day of school, that in my experience, because we did do it one night, we did have a school board meeting on the first night of school, and I felt like personally that staff was sort of having to decide between getting prepared for a school board meeting versus dealing with issues in the schools, and I just felt that perhaps I, it will be a change for this summer. There will be a lot going on that I, I preferred for, well, I would like Dr. Kizner and staff's input on whether for them, that, whether there is a more appropriate date in August or July, but I'm open, really for you all. It was just my thoughts.
Okay, so thank you. I did discuss this with staff, and we would recommend, if the board was willing to, to change July 9th to July 16th.
Yes. Additionally, and I don't need an answer now, I'm fine with approving this as is, but with school starting earlier, do we need to have two meetings in July this year, or, that, that's completely up to you, just, just a thought.
In July or August? There's only one meeting in August as well, and that's, we'll be in school that whole month.
I mean, we can, we can always add them as we go if you feel, you know, that it's necessary, but over the summer for appointments and things of that nature, you might need us a little more often, and it's better to prepare.
Yeah, we, yeah, I mean, there was a thought, again, maybe add a second meeting in August, two weeks after, on the 27th. I think we felt good, you know, the other thing is, our twelve-month employees have a shorter window to take vacations this year, and I like to try to minimize disrupting their time that they could take vacations. It's basically three weeks in July.
So what do you think about just moving, maybe even moving, you know, kind of what Ms. Hazard was getting after, maybe moving the, you know, July's already moved back, Dr. Kizner, maybe we moved August back?
We're moving it forward to the 16th.
Or, I'm sorry, when I mean back, I mean to a later date in the month, to give staff the ability to take their leave and then come back, I mean...
Well, August, we're all hit back, we're all back late July, so...
Well, I guess the issue was the two days, you know, so if the, so if the staff's coming back in July, then I'm good with August, then.
I think Ms. Decatur's comment is that we could evaluate when we get closer.
Yeah.
But if we could commit, because people would like to vacation planning, commit to the week, July 16th. So I think that would be most helpful.
Okay, so...
That helps board members as well, because I know many of us try very hard to make sure that we, but we too are condensed, so...
Would the motion maker accept that change to the calendar, to change the July meeting from July 9th to July 16th?
Yes, that's fine.
Ms. Young, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Is that acceptable?
Yes.
All right, so we have an amended motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve the calendar with the change from the July meeting from the 9th to the 16th, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 5.02, adoption of Virginia School Board Association's code of conduct. Do we have a motion?
Motion to adopt the VSBA code of conduct as written.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Mr. McCosker. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Ms. Hall will be passing that down for everyone's signature this evening. 5.03, adoption of 2019 administrative authorizations. If you had a chance to review these, these are, I don't think there's anything new here, is there, Dr. Kizner? It's the designate, the superintendent's designated to appoint, attend school board meetings in his absence, that would be the Associate Superintendent of Instructional Services, authorization of superintendent to assign and transfer teachers' principals and assistants' principals in accordance with Virginia law and Stafford County Public School policy, authorization of superintendent or designated representative to issue signed employment contracts and accept resignations.
I agree to adopt such authorizations.
I'll second if that was a motion.
We had a motion. I mean, Ms. Hazard, you already made that motion, didn't you? Mr. McCosker seconded it?
That was the one prior.
That was the last one. Oh, okay.
No, I was waiting for that one. So if Ms. Young made the motion, I will second it for administrative authorization.
All right, well, we have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 5.04, appointment of board members to Commonwealth Governor's School Board, County Parks and Recreation Commission, Public Private Day School Committee, and Joint Schools Working Committee for the term of January 1st through December 31st, 2019. Now, let's take these one at a time. Commonwealth Governor's School. Any interest?
Oops, I'm happy to continue. If, if nobody else wants to do it, that's fine.
Does anyone want to, anyone want to be an alternate for Dr. Chase with the Commonwealth Governor's School?
No, you.
Yeah, I'll stay as alternative, but I'd be happy to, please, give it up to somebody who wants to learn more about the Governor's School.
Don't see anybody...
Don't see anyone raising their hand, so I guess I got it still.
I'll be second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, volunteers, we like volunteers. All right, so that would be, the appointment would be Dr. Chase as the primary and Ms. Young as the alternate. All in favor? Aye.
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 All right, all opposed? None. All right, all right, what about County Parks and Rec Commission? Right now, it's Mr. McCosker as the primary and Ms. Young as the alternate, and I think Ms. Young indicated an interest in being the primary?
No, I did not indicate interest to be primary. I indicated an interest that the primary be there so that the alternate doesn't have to.
You're coming in broken up here, right? You're not readable.
All right, do we have anyone with an interest in being the primary in the County Parks and Rec Commission?
I already have that t-shirt.
Of course, it's a non-voting position.
I've never done that, who's not served on it yet?
Yeah, exactly.
I've already served, okay?
Done that one.
A long time ago, I think I did it.
Yeah, who's not served yet?
Ms. Decatur, aren't you dying to?
I'm, no, I'm not, but I will, because I'm a good teammate.
I've already signed up.
But I don't want to give up my position on the Public Private Day School Committee, so if that's going to alter me serving on that one, then I'm not going to.
I don't, I don't, I think we can work that out.
I'll do it.
Does anybody want to be an alternate?
Did you guys plan that one before you came also?
No, we don't, we don't plan anything before meetings.
All right, well, we'll, we'll make the appointment of Ms. Decatur as the representative, and at this point, we'll have no alternate, so if there's a meeting you can't go to, we'll...
I'm giving my husband your phone numbers.
Okay, I will continue as alternate. I'm a good team member also, that's that. Back up Ms. Decatur here.
All right, well, thank you all. Public Private Day School Committee, Ms. Decatur. Oh, yes, that's true. Well, I don't know if we vote on that one or not.
Which one?
It's a non-voting position, but why not? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? None.
Aye.
All right, Public Private Day School Committee, Ms. Decatur's interesting, continuing?
I'll stay on.
I'd really like to take, no, I wouldn't.
I'll stay on as alternate.
Egan wants to stay on?
Yeah, I'm good with Ms. Decatur, Ms. Egan.
Ms. Egan, you want to stay on?
All right.
Okay, yeah.
All right, all in favor of Ms. Decatur and Ms. Egan being the representatives on the Public Private Day School Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Carries unanimously. All right, Joint Schools Working Committee?
I would like to be on that one.
Well, I'm willing to go off that one. So, right now, who's on that one?
I would like to...
I would like to stay on there.
Dr. Chase, me, and Mr. McCosker. All right?
I, I am happy to give joint schools up, and I will preface it with this, that there's a movement on the supervisor's side of the house to kind of make the joint schools kind of that place where we talk about business as a joint boards, and, you know, they're, they're kind of slimming down the joint meetings that we have, whether it be finance committee and others, to just the joint schools. So it is a very, very good board to be on, if you're going to be. It's a very, it's a board that you can have a lot of say on, and, and I think they're moving forward, and I think they have support over at the supervisors to, to keep this Joint Schools Working Committee, there's a draft charter already, and to, to be a very good and a very, and a very productive board. So I am willing to give my spot up on it for someone who would like to jump in there and take it.
Mr. McCosker, do you know if there has been a, like, day of the week you all normally meet? I'm just, I'm only curious, just...
Mondays, is it Mondays?
It's been, it's been Mondays, it's been Mondays. The charter, I think, I don't, oh, gosh, I can't remember exactly what it says.
Oh, no, it's fine. I just wondered if it was, you know, like Parks and Rec was established, it was like the third or whatever it was.
Yeah, it's, so, you know, they're trying to make some boundaries and some, and scope this, this, you know, scope it out with a charter, and so, and right now, it is Mondays, I know that.
Would you like to volunteer, Ms. Hazard?
I'm willing to serve. I know we've had some frustration with this committee, so I have to admit, there's a part of me that if, if the committee is going to meet and accomplish and stuff, I am willing, I want to jump in. And Mr. McCosker, that was not meant, but it just, I know it's been frustrating for many, and I just, I'm willing to help work from the school board side to make sure that it is a meaningful committee, but I think, I will also say, if I think that it is not, I just need the board to know, I will make that clear as well.
So should we have an alternate, just in case that comes up?
I think that's a good idea, to have an alternate in general.
Would you want us to be an alternate?
Sure, I'll, I'll be an alternate.
Okay, just to make sure that we have.
All right, so, so we have Dr. Chase, Ms. Young, and Ms. Hazard as the appointed members, and Mr. McCosker as the alternate.
Yep.
Okay, sound good? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. McCosker?
All right, that brings us to the consent items. Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion for consent items, past meeting minutes, personnel report, new member for technology committee, and religious exemptions.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. No discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes unanimously. That brings us to the superintendent's comments.
Okay, I just want to make, to announce, to appointment announcements, okay? Tonight, just based on your actions, I'd like to welcome Ms. White, I know she's here. Okay, thank you. Come on, come closer.
Ms. Who?
Ms. White.
Ms. White.
Yeah, Ms. Catherine White will assume the position of Assistant Principal at North Stafford High School. Ms. White has been the testing quarter at North Stafford since 2010. In that role, she led the development of the SOL writing recovery program and collaborated with the math department to develop a focus remediation for underclassmen. Previously, Ms. White was Science Department Chair at North Stafford and a science teacher for Clark County Public Schools in Virginia and Jefferson County Schools in West Virginia. Ms. White earned her bachelor's of art degrees and degree in environmental science and, and policy with a biology concentration from Hood College, a master's of science degree in environmental science from John Hopkins University, and a master's of education degree in education administration from Shandover University. Welcome, congratulations. I'm just going to briefly mention, the, the other appointee is relocating from Florida, so she was unable to be here tonight. But anyway, Ms. Lori Reader will assume the position of ten-month Assistant Principal at Rodney Thomas Middle School. I'll just tell you very quickly, they were looking for someone with a strong background in special education, and she's a special education administrator in Florida, and I had a chance to talk to her over the phone, and I think she'll be a very good addition to our community.
Long as she doesn't bring sunny weather, we'll, we'll accept her.
Thank you. Did you have any other comments, Dr. Kizner?
No, I just, I know the school board knows this, I'll just make very quickly, as I'm reminded by my colleague here. Ms. Karen Bingham has taken a very important position. She'll be the Assistant Principal at North Star...
Early Childhood Education Center.
And, and if you know Karen, she's great energy and, and a real positive attitude, so, thank you.
And there was a note on the agenda that you were going to...
Yeah, now I'm going to go to my comments.
Your comments, okay.
That was, that was...
Sorry.
Before I go into the comments that I really want to talk about, I just want to quickly mention that yesterday and today, I was down in Richmond, the Superintendent Association and the School Business Association had a two-day workshop with a lot of people explaining the governor's budget and Virginia retirement system, early childhood and preschool funding, and what I would just tell you, I know, there's an interest, I think we're getting our legislative committee to organize. We, we benefit greatly if the governor's budget as proposed is approved, so I think this is a conversation we want to have with our state legislators, but anyway, it was very beneficial. I also want to just mention to the board and to the community, I know there's a lot of interest in the new proposed policy on gender identity and expression, a policy 24-20, and as you know, I, people know it's on the website, it's been revised to reflect the feedback received during the past several weeks from both the school board members and members of the community. Last time, I was, again, encouraged to meet with different stakeholder groups. So far, I've had a chance to meet with all of our principals, I met with the Equity, Opportunity, and Diversity Committee, and this week, I will be meeting with the Staff Advisory Committee and the Parent Advisory Committee. So never, I guess what I'm really sharing with you is that I'm still in the process of soliciting, and we've been getting lots of emails, and I really appreciate everybody's thoughts on this policy, but I am not asking the board for tonight, or even the 22nd, to take action. I, I need to provide you as much of the feedback that I'm receiving and reflect the feedback in, in policy statements, okay? So that's really the only thing I want to mention.
Thank you, Dr. Kizner. That brings us to citizen comments. Dr. Chase, would you like to read our...
That's why you wanted to switch seats. Individuals wishing to comment at this time may do so by responding to the general invitation by the chairman. Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organization... Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose or topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairwoman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes with the approval of the board. Citizen comment which is profane, abusive, or which threatens imminent physical harm shall be ruled out of order by the chairwoman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals desiring to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Public School Policy 11113, Public Complaints.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Since we have twenty-one people signed up, and then we're gonna open it up to whoever else wants to speak, we will be very strictly adhering to the three-minute rule. There's a stoplight on the podium there, the green is when you start, the yellow is when you have one minute left, and the red is when the time is up. So, I'm gonna call five speakers, so the other ones can be prepared to, to, to come right up. First is Nicholas Nagel, second is Susan Stimson, third is William Stimson, fourth is Curtis Line Weaver, and the fifth is Lisa Line Weaver. And when you come forward, if you could give us your name and address, please.
My name is Nick Nagel, I live on Brookwood Drive, I'm in George Washington District. I am here to speak on Policy 2420, even though Dr. Kizner is still working on it. I'd like to put out some initial thoughts. I am a parent of two teenagers, both in Stafford schools. I do support 2420. I do believe that this is right, in my heart, I believe it is right. I believe that all kids deserve a right to be treated equally. I am supportive of transgender children. I know that they believe on a deep level that their gender is different from what the sex they were born with. They have deeply held gender identities, and they want to be true to themselves. They want to be the person that they feel to be. This is not a random choice for them. There's a lot of misinformation out there, but at the end of the day, all children should have the opportunity to fully participate and do well in school. This policy is about schools doing what is best for all students. As a parent of two teenagers, I want to be a good role model for them. I want to show them that it's important to stand up and do the right thing, even when there are plenty of people arguing against you. I want transgender students in Stafford County to know that they are supported. At the end of the day, everyone should be able to be themselves and treated fairly for who they are. I believe that Stafford County and every other school district in Virginia should create policies protecting all children against discrimination. All of this and more is why I asked, I am before you to ask you to do what is right for Stafford County students and approve of Policy 2420 when it is ready. This is about what we, doing what we can for all students. We want to support them and give transgender students a fair chance to succeed in school, so I hope you approve this policy. Thank you.
Madam Chair, can you instruct the speakers to speak into the microphone? Some people in the back are having a hard time hearing.
Oh, okay, sorry. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Susan Stimson, I live in the Falmouth District. Do you need my address? One fifteen Hunter Drive. I know all of you up here, and I served on the Stafford County Board of Supervisors, was chairman for two years, and I've actually made it a personal policy to never come and do this. But tonight, I feel so strongly about this proposed policy and the fact that I believe it's an assault on our First Amendment rights, because all of us have First Amendment rights, not just one specific group. I, I want to just get to the heart of the matter, of what exactly is the problem? The superintendent's proposed policy came when we learned that teachers at one of our schools did not know how to properly protect a transgender student during an active shooter drill. So, we had an issue at one of the schools where a teacher did not follow the safety policy that is prescribed here in Stafford County. Dr. Kizner told the Freelance Star, "If there's a real intruder, we don't then start saying, 'You go to the boys' room, you go to the girls' room,' we would say, 'Go to the nearest secure room.'" That's our policy. It wasn't followed for whatever reason. Tonight, we're here taking up a proposed policy that has absolutely nothing to do with a safety policy that is technically correct. If you look at the Department of Homeland Security, what do you do when you have an active shooter? Everyone goes to the nearest secured room. All Dr. Kizner needed to do was correct a situation in one of his schools where the emergency policy wasn't followed, required retraining, and I appreciate the fact that Dr. Kizner has reached out to political groups and stakeholders. It might have been a better idea to reach out to our sheriff and ask him, "What can we do to make sure that our children are safe in an emergency situation?" But instead, Stafford County became a national embarrassment. I'm embarrassed at what happened. And none of us really needs to be here tonight if Dr. Kizner had just simply done a retraining of this issue. I just want to get to one important point, and that's about compelled speech. In America, First Amendment rights, we have the right to remain silent. We can't compel someone to say a word that they don't want to say. I think it's very reasonable for a teacher to agree to call a child by a name that the child wants to be called by. But to force a teacher or anyone to say a word that they don't want to say strikes at the very heart of First Amendment rights. I would ask you to please not pass this policy. Thank you.
Anyone that wants to submit their comments for the record can give them to our clerk when you finish.
Hello, my name is William Stimson, and I live in one fifteen Hunter Drive in the Falmouth District, and I'm here to speak to Policy 2420. I'm a college student and a recent graduate from Stafford High School. With a fresh memory of the public school experience and a continued vested interest in education, I decided that it would be worth my time to read over and ponder Policy 2420. Upon analysis, I've come to the conclusion that despite having what are probably good intentions, this policy fails to accomplish the goals that it sets its sights on. The first problem I noticed was regarding the idea of assertion, a word that is used dozens of times throughout the policy. For starters, the policy fails to effectively define the criteria for what a legitimate assertion is. The term is used dozens of times without any clear definition. However, the more pressing issue I take with this idea is the amount of responsibility pinned on the discretion of a young child who could be as young as four or five years old. Now, none of this is to neglect the legitimacy of any of these children's feelings or identities, but it's rather to point out the importance of parents and other adult figures in the child's life. It's the parent's job to make decisions for their children until they're old enough to choose for themselves. This policy grants young children the ability to dictate the speech of their teachers, requiring nothing more than an assertion, whatever that means, since it wasn't clearly defined. The second and quite possibly more severe problem I take with this policy is with regard to the bathroom and changing areas. I find that the policy fails to consider the feelings of all the other students in the school. Over the past year or so, we've witnessed the Me Too movement, where women are rightfully urged to let people know if they are ever uncomfortable. And it's important to remember that when young students are in bathrooms, locker rooms, in showers, they are at their most vulnerable, and it is absolutely imperative that we treat any feelings of discomfort as absolutely legitimate. The policy reads, quote, "If a high school student expresses discomfort with a transgender student's use of the same-sex segregated restroom, locker room, or changing facility, school administrators may address the discomfort." This language is far too ambiguous on an issue that we must take more seriously. It barely even addresses this problem that will inevitably come up at some point. The policy doesn't ensure that the feelings of discomfort will be treated as legitimate at all. It only says they may be considered. All students should feel equally entitled to expressing their discomfort and should never be discouraged in any way from coming forward. It is my belief that if any student feels any type of discomfort when they are in a changing room or a shower, their concerns should be met with absolute seriousness, no exceptions, not ambiguity as to what will happen to them if they express discomfort. This policy falls short of protecting all children equally, and I am especially concerned for the young girls who may feel discouraged from expressing discomfort or worry that they might have.
Good evening, my name is Curtis, I live off Village Parkway in Stafford, Virginia. I'm here to address Policy 2420, gender identity and expression. I will start at the top of the document. As I was looking over it, I saw that, so the purpose of this is to ensure a safe, welcoming, free-from-discrimination-for-all-students policy regardless of student's gender, gender identity or expression. What I found through reading through the policy, it really failed to do that on almost all accounts. What I'd like to do is go through the rest of the policy and demonstrate why I think it fails to address safety, security, and freedom from discrimination. Move down first to the definition. Transgender is an umbrella term for those students whose expression, behaviors, mannerisms, appearances, or identities are incongruent with their sex assigned at birth. I found that to be an interesting use of a term. I've been in the delivery, delivery room three times, and all three times, I never saw the doctor flip a coin and go, "Girl," "Oh, boy," whatever. It was based on biological evidence determined by the presence of X and Y chromosomes. Hard sci- hard science that I was taught when I was coming through junior high and high school, I don't think it can be termed any other way, so I just would suggest using a better term than "assigned" when it's more accurate. Moving on, though, that directly relates to the next point for names, pronouns, school records. "School staff shall, on our students' request, be addressed by the student's preferred name, gender, pronoun, et cetera, et cetera." Susan Stimson rolled it up perfectly. The thought that this policy will compel school administrators, teachers, to address a student by anything other than, whether being male or female, based on the biology of the student is a violation of their First Amendment rights. So, again, a violation of, of rights. Moving into restrooms and locker rooms. All students are entitled and have access to restrooms, et cetera. "School personnel shall permit the student to use the restroom, locker room, or changing facility consistent with the school's asserted gender identity." So, again, the first thing that popped into my mind, we're gonna have boys and girls. I mean, honestly, I'm, I'm for equal rights as much as the next person, I want everyone to be treated equally. But at the same time, I don't like the idea of my daughter being compelled to shower with boys in the locker room on school property. It's not right. And it violates my rights as a parent, that there's a policy that potentially makes that a real possibility. Moving down, though, it's somewhat mitigated in that a student who feels uncomfortable with the situation can be, facilities, other stuff can be made available to, for that student to, who desires more privacy. So, what that really tells me is that if it was my daughter who felt uncomfortable with the situation, she would have to self-identify as being uncomfortable with being compelled to shower with boys or whatever. She would have to put herself out in public to be discriminated against, segregated from other students, to be given a, a different facility to use or whatever, and probably opening herself up to mistreatment by other students for not feeling, not being a supporter. I'll, I'll wrap it up real quick.
Well...
I, I just don't think that...
We have to, we're gonna have to, to cut you off, I apologize.
The policy does not address safety, security, or rights.
All right, after the next speaker, Anthony Bellotti, as after the, the next speaker, who is Ms. Line Weaver, Leigh Anne Van Doren, Nicholas De Silva, and Shannon Spielman.
Can you hear me? Before the timer starts, I just want to submit the copies of an article to the school board with a doctor's statement on his clinical experience and research regarding transgenders. "Good evening, Representatives, and our new superintendent, Scott Kizner, are relatively new. My name is Lisa Line Weaver, I'm a mother of three and a registered nurse. I also hold a master's in family nurse practicing. I'm here in regards to the newly proposed Policy 2420. This policy has emerged after the U.S. Office of Civil Rights and the Department of Justice under the Obama Administration with Eric Holder on March 12, 2015, twisted Title IX to not only apply to a physical trait but to a behavior. Biological sex, age, and race are all physical traits. There is no law that has been passed by Congress that actually exists that delineates anatomical boys using girls' bathrooms. Most alarming is the language under Policy 2420's school records that ends with, 'The student has legally changed their name or sex.' Are we going to allow in this county and in our state children to be injected with organ-damaging hormones of the opposite sex and mutilating surgeries which will forever diminish or permanently sterilize children from being able to ever have their own children, should they change their mind about their behavior once they become legal adults? On June 4, 2015, just three months after the announcement of the corrupt Justice Department, Dr. Paul R. McHugh, the former psychiatrist-in-chief for Johns Hopkins Hospital, distinguished psychiatry section, 'Transgenderism,' he says, 'is a mental disorder that merits treatment that sex change is biologically impossible, and that people who promote sexual reassignment surgery are collaborating with and promoting a mental disorder.' He also reported on a new study showing that the suicide rate among transgender people who had reassignment surgery is twenty times higher than the suicide rate among non-transgender people. Dr. McHugh further noted studies from Vanderbilt University and London's Portman Clinic of Children who had expressed transgender feelings but for who, over time, seventy to eighty percent spontaneously lost those feelings. Furthermore, the burden should not be on teachers or any other layperson to diagnose any type of dissociative disorder or, in today's culture, transgenderism. Let teachers teach nurses, nurses, psychiatrists, doctors, and psychiatric nurse practitioners who are educated in the field of mental health conditions and trained to diagnose, diagnose. Policy 2420 would also make it so that any child who expressed discomfort for having to change, shower, or sleep next to a member of the opposite biological sex with overnight school field trips, which is in the policy, would then be counseled. This is compelled speech by the government enforced against one's conscience, which is protected by Virginia state law." Thank you.
Hello, my name's Anthony Bellotti. My address is twenty Grace Manor Court, Fredericksburg. Yeah, I'm here to talk about 2420. I personally support it as a trans man, which is something that previous speakers have forgotten exists, apparently. That means I'm assigned female at birth. I actually went through similar things that they were talking about. I actually wrote a whole speech, but I think I'm just gonna share my experience, because I really think that's the most relevant. Yeah, I did experience having to use a totally different bathroom than all of my other peers. I experienced missing out on several different field trips, because I knew that I wasn't gonna be able to be placed with the gender that I identified as, and that that would out me as a trans person. And despite what propaganda would tell you, there are actually more cases of trans people being assaulted in public bathrooms than there are cis people being assaulted by trans people. And I think that that's really important to remember, especially when you have people telling you really incorrect information. Yeah, so, I actually have been here before, I'm sure many of you remember me. I've been to about eleven meetings now. I recently graduated from Colonial Forge. I'm now attending VCU, where I have the highest GPA that I've ever attained. And I want to believe that's because Stafford County prepared me, but I know that a lot of that has to do with the fact that I'm now in an inclusive learning environment, where I am treated with respect and dignity, and I hope that you can bring that energy into Stafford County like I have deserved and like every other trans student deserves. So, I hope you will vote yes on 2420.
We want to give everyone a chance to speak, and it's gonna be a long night, so I would appreciate if you could hold your applause. This is Ms. Van Doren. And Nicholas De Silva, isn't it?
I was so busy clapping, I forgot to come down and do my own speaking. Hi, thank you for being here tonight and for grappling with this issue so thoughtfully. My name is Leigh Anne Van Doren, I live at Nine Ridge Hollow Drive, Fredericksburg, Virginia. I am the mother of a 2015 Stafford High School graduate from the Stat Engineering Program at Stafford Senior High, and I have a senior at the Commonwealth Governor's School at Stafford Senior High getting ready to graduate. I live in the George Washington District, and we actually moved here from the city of Fredericksburg to take advantage of the Stat Engineering Program, and then stayed to take advantage of the CGS programs. So, we invested heavily in our children's education and believe that these programs were worth investing in. were worth investing in. I believe that every student deserves to feel safe at school in order to learn at their highest level. My oldest daughter is physically disabled. One of her biggest fears was that in an emergency, like a fire or a shooting, she would be left behind to die by her able-bodied teachers and peers. I believe no student should be left to die or spend time worrying about the possibility of being left to die because they are transgender or disabled or just different from what society accepts as normal. Equally, all students should feel like they can go to the bathroom safely without fear of bullying. I believe Policy 2420 addresses everyone's fears, founded and unfounded. I believe it is in the best interest of all students and this board to pass this language that is fair and reasonable so that we can all go back to goals that I feel are more important, like funding adequate math instruction at our high schools. No young woman who goes to high school in this county should be told that she needs to give up her goal of attending engineering school because the math teachers don't have enough time to accommodate a 504 or an IEP. Without our outside support, hiring tutors and enrolling in online courses that we pay for, not the school, my daughter would not have been able to matriculate at VCU Engineering. The lack of enough math teachers is at a critical level in this county. We already lost Stat Engineering at Stafford Senior High because we could not afford to pay what the certified teacher needed to be paid to stay. Our attention should be on educating our kids to a high standard and helping to create the environment that will support all students having access to a high-quality STEM education, even if they are not able-bodied, heterosexual, high-income, white males. We cannot afford to waste our children's talents just because they do not fit a particular mold. My husband cannot find enough engineers to work at his company right here in the Fredericksburg area while we are squabbling.
Thank you.
Hello, Superintendent Kizner and honorable school board members. My name is Nicholas De Silva, a former Stafford High School student. I come tonight to speak on behalf of SB 2420 because of my personal experiences. In high school, I saw some of my closest friends who are trans, and I am sad to say I consistently saw them discriminated against. Our teachers would malign them, intentionally misgender them, deny them access to the correct bathroom facilities, keeping them unsafe, and in one grievous incident nearly had a yearbook story pulled because, because solely of their trans identity until the American Civil Liberties Union got involved. Of course, I do not need to remind you of the more recent incident during a lockdown drill of a student left alone in a potentially dangerous situation. I'm not going to belabor my point with the copious evidence available in support of this bill, as I'm sure many of my, many others here today can far more eloquently. I came here to speak on behalf of my friends, the people I love, and the children of Stafford County who deserve a safe environment to live, to learn, and to grow up in. I implore you to not give in to the ignorance of others and listen to the testimony of many here tonight who have had, who have lived these experiences and who deserve the opportunity to grow. Please, I implore you, give the children of Stafford County the chance to have the childhood that so many before have been denied. Thank you.
After Shannon Spielman, the next speaker will be Timothy Devine, Adam Mann, Hannah Bradley, and Melissa Bradley.
What's going on, board members? I'm back. So I came in last time, I talked directly to you. I actually wanted to shake your hand, if that's okay. Could I do that? Honestly, man, you took what I said and you listened to me, sir, and I appreciate that. I came in last time, and I actually don't need this mic because I'm just a loud person. I came in here last time and I was one-
If you could address your comments to the board, Mr. Spielman, we'd appreciate it.
I was against it. And, you know, I came in, I told you if you changed what you changed, I would be for it. So now I'm for it because you actually listened, you did it, you changed them, you revised it, it's a good revise, I like it. I've sat back in this room now and I've kind of listened. I had a big speech I want to do and I kind of left it on my desk. Go figure. But now all I've heard is religion and science. Well, religion tells you that you should love everybody regardless of who they are. You should love them, love thy neighbor. Science, every one of them that came up here and said, "Oh, well, their DNA says this." Man, we're past that now. That's great, you can be born a boy and you can be a girl now. Why? Because medically we can do that. You can medically change it. It's, it's not a hard concept. We've progressed as a society to do that. If we could fix cancer, we'd be great. We ain't got that part yet. We working on it though, it's cool. So you sit here and you do those things. You guys are forgetting that these are children that we're trying to protect. It's children. This is not an adult walking into the Walmart bathroom, like I said last time. This is children. You're more than welcome to write a note to the school saying, "I don't want my kid to participate in PE." Go for it, have fun with it. It is what it is, that's your choice as a parent. Stop bullying these kids, because that's all I've heard today from grown adults, is bullying towards transgender. That's ridiculous. We are an adult society. When did it become okay to pick on an eight-year-old, a 10-year-old? When? The only time I got yelled at at that age is when I did something wrong. Not because I wanted to be a boy and people are going to go, "Oh, well, what do you know?" My first name's Shannon. Shannon, okay? I'm a dude with, with a girl's name, dude with a girl's name, right here, that's me. I know what those kids go through. I was picked on all through elementary school. I went by my middle name of Cole in middle school because I had a girl's name. You gotta be kidding me. We're past that. I'm 35 years old, I've served my country. Yes, I've done that. I got up, I raised my hand, I served a long time. Medically retired, cancer, that's why I want it fixed. But we bully, we're bullying this. You've done great revisions. Thank you, my time's up, enjoy.
Timothy Devine here. Adam Mann, Hannah Bradley, and Melissa Bradley, after.
Yes, hi, good evening. First of all, I, this is exciting, I've never done this before. I want to thank you, school board, because this is a, this takes courage and resilience, and I appreciate that. And I really appreciate you listening to us, and I really appreciate you suggesting priority to those of us who live in Stafford. Oh, I left that part out. Yeah, 11 Trustlow Falmouth. Right. I, oh, and proud father of five children. Yeah, that's right, five. So for, for me, gender transition itself has been a big focus of this. And, you know, as has been suggested, people should be treated as people, they should be respected as people. And, and to me, that's, you know, that's not the moral issue here. If, something that's very interesting to me is, is look at what the Intersexual Society of North America has to say, ISNA.org. And, and they talk about conditions where, where people are born and they have to bring in a special, a specialist, one out of, as many as one out of 1,500 births, just to help the doctor determine the sex of the child. It could be outwardly male, but then later they learn there's inward female parts. So this is a real issue. I mean, this really happens. And, and what I'm saying is, in some cases, quite naturally, no matter your faith or whatever you lean on, there are, there are people born in these very challenging circumstances, and parents have to make hard decisions. And it may not be until adolescence that they have to learn, wait a minute, I guess I'm, I'm not the gender I've been told I am. And so because of those facts, for me, even as a Christian, a Christian minister at that, it leans me to realize that gender transition happens, okay? And so it's not really up to me or any citizen of Stafford County to then judge, well, is this an intersexual, like, kind of rightful transition, or is this someone who sort of decided because of whatever reason? So it's not our place as parents or as a school to decide whether it's necessary. But where it becomes an immoral issue is how we respond in policy. We can respond morally, we can respond immorally. And the grievous concern I have with the policy, though we may need that, this may be the time for gender transition policy, the grievous concern I have is the locker room and the, and, yeah, the locker room and the shower situation. We pledged allegiance earlier to the flag, liberty and justice for all. Liberty and justice for all. Yes, we have liberty, it's a tricky word, liberty. That doesn't mean that I can disrobe in front of everybody right now just because I'm comfortable with it. We have laws against that. I wish this gentleman would arrest me, right? Because there's laws, it's liberty for all, not just the one individual. So we have to consider everyone, the vast majority of the students, as well as treating everyone with equality. Thank you for your time.
Adam Mann.
I have some handouts, am I supposed to give that to you?
You can give that to the clerk when you finish.
Oh, okay, cool.
She'll put it on the record.
All right, awesome. My name's Adam Mann, I live at 17 Brew Street, I'm here in Stafford, I'm in the Rock Hill District. Earlier this morning, I got up kind of early, and I started to collect data on trans youth in schools to rattle off to you. But the more I started to find data, the more I realized that the effectiveness of the approach isn't, isn't good enough. I came here today not just to change your mind about this one policy, but also to change your hearts a far more difficult task. You see, we change our minds all the time, I changed my mind about coming to this meeting about a dozen times, and whether to speak or not. But we really change our hearts, we rarely change our hearts, and that's why I'm here tonight. To begin to change your heart with my story so that you will change your mind on your own with some shared credible facts, which I'll give to you, to the clerk. I also wouldn't be here tonight if it wasn't for my boyfriend Anthony Bellotti, who just spoke earlier. We've been dating since I asked him out to my senior homecoming dance in 2016 with a poster and some cheesy puns about our favorite show. My boyfriend, as he told you, is transgender. Over the past two years or so, I've learned a lot from him, and he has taught me a lot about being an ally to him and his, and the trans community, and consequently our broader LGBTQ queer community. Whether it is as simple as lending a shoulder for him to cry on or driving him to a consultation for gender-affirming surgery, which we did together in Richmond yesterday. One thing he often reminds me of is when we first started dating, I started watching trans YouTubers so I wouldn't sound dumb when we discussed his identity and his experiences. He says that's when he knew I was the right one for him, and I agree. One of the first things I began to realize in regards to his experience as a trans person is when, is how often his daily life was centered around humiliation and harassment in school. He would text me frantically about what bathroom to go to, and sometimes he even wouldn't go to the bathroom until when he got home. He would tell me about how his teachers didn't respect or tried to avoid his pronouns and name, and all this heightened his anxiety and depression and took away from the time to do the thing he came to do in school, and that is to learn. Anthony is one of the thousands of students, past and present, who have been let down by the school district. This policy, if enacted, will positively affect the lives of every trans kid in our, in our county, plain and simple. This policy won't negatively impact anybody, especially not cis students, contrary to some opinions which were given earlier. I urge you to practice empathy and compassion and true leadership by talking with trans students and their supportive parents. Real conversation doesn't happen in a school boarding, school board meeting. It happens in a small local business or a private home or public event. Good to know your constituents, and I'm sure you'll vote on Policy 2420. Thank you.
Okay, after Hannah and Melissa Bradley, we have Deborah Tricky, Valerie Hill, and Ben Litchfield.
Good evening. My name is Hannah Bradley. I live in the Rock Hill District. My mom asked me if I can see girl, other girls' private parts in the bathroom. I told, I told her, "No way." The only way I can see is if I looked under the stall, which I won't do. My mommy taught me it, it would, it, it's what is on the inside that counts. She told me that, and she told me that, and I know that's true. My friends are my friends because they are nice. They have my trust, and I love all of them. I just want all of them, all of us to be treated the same, even, even if one of them is different. I am different. I am not transgender. I have autism. I see people as their self. My sister is my sister. And if you pass this policy, my mom says she will be treated equally. That makes me happy. I have a hard time understanding some things because of the autism. But I do understand that people are people and kids are kids. I don't care who you are or where you pee, I just, I just plea, please wash your hands. What is the difference between a trans student using the bathroom? That they identify as, and when a mom brings her son into the women's bathroom, or when my father had to take me into the men's room when we were out. This isn't Bird Box. My eyes weren't covered. I never saw anything I shouldn't. Please pass the policy to treat all LGBT people equal. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Stafford County residents. My name is Melissa Bradley, I live in the Rock Hill District of Stafford County. I want to remind everybody that this proposed policy is not strictly about bathrooms and locker rooms, but many people only see that part of it. I want to remind you that these are just children that we are talking about. But since so many people are concerned with the bathroom, I will address something with you. Parents have expressed that they don't want their children exposed to opposite gender genitalia. I understand their concerns, but with all due respect, it is a little hypocritical if their family is also one who has a son that the mother takes into the public bathroom with them, or a father whose small daughter can't be left alone outside when he goes to the bathroom. Just as women go into the stall and lock the door, so do children. You are not able to see anything, and if you are, you are looking way too closely. A year and a half ago, in a local elementary school, a child four months into transition with bows in her hair and a pretty brown dress on was exiting the boys' bathroom. She was approached by two male peers who stopped her. "When will you start using the girls' bathroom?" one said. "Yeah, you don't belong in here," the other added. The child had been comfortable using the boys' bathroom still until that day. If the two kids can see that she didn't belong there, why can't the system? Locker rooms are another concern, but the last time I checked, they're still in underwear when they're changing out for gym class, and many of the girls choose to use the bathroom or the shower stalls. I just talked with the middle schooler who still does this, and a high schooler who still as well changes in the bathroom stall. I cannot express enough that our trans children are not interested in showing your child their genitalia. They just want inclusion, they just want to belong. A parent's job is to protect their child, I agree. But some parents' comments about this policy before, about it being a safety impact on their child is anything but. To assume that a trans person with male genitalia is a threat to your child is no different than me assuming that your child's father in the school is a threat to my child just because they have male genitalia. That is asinine, that is not the case. I know this, you know this, we all know this. We lead by example. Stafford County is very diverse. When we moved here, 610 was one lane each way. Took me five minutes to go five minutes. We have people coming in from all parts of the country. We have students that have actually had birth certificates revised in their original state. So nobody in the system is going to know that they are transgender. There are people that are using the bathroom next to a trans person, and they don't know that. And it, nothing, nothing happened, nothing, it's not affecting them in any way. The stall is closed, I, you know, I, that's, that's basically, you know, that's it. Our stalls are closed, they're locked for a reason. Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, school board members and Mr. Kishner. My name's Deborah Tricky. I live at Antietam Loop in the acquired district. I'm against policy twenty-four twenty. I wrote in the Star Weekly that a transgender policy was in the works to be voted on in January, so I felt compelled to come to speak to you this evening. Since there are now students entering the school system with gender dysphoria, the condition of feeling one's emotional and psychological identity as male or female to be opposite to one's biological sex. I do agree a policy is necessary. However, this policy change should fit in with those other policies already implemented in the school system. We have many special students in the school that, like transgender students, are the minority. For example, my child. She has a peanut and tree nut allergy. At lunch, she is separated from the other children and has to sit at a nut-free table, sometimes by herself, or at other times with others like her. She wants to be like the other children. She wants to sit with her friends, but she can't. She is different from them. For her protection and for the freedom of all the other children to have nuts, milk, eggs, and other items that may be allergens, she must be set apart. This should also be true for the transgender students. They need to have a locker room and bathroom set aside for them, only for them, so that all other students may maintain their safety and privacy that they are entitled to. I thank you for your time this evening, and I greatly appreciate your dedication to the children of Stafford County.
Good evening. My name is Valerie Hill. I live on Dawson Drive in Falmouth, Virginia. Um, I'm here to express my support for, uh, policy twenty-four twenty. The policy is a unique chance for Stafford County to ensure that with all the tran, all the challenges that transgender and gender nonconforming students face, um, many of which we've heard about today, uh, that we are doing our best to remove school policies as a source of those challenges for those students. Eliminating bullying entirely may be a pipe dream, but this policy would be a significant step in ensuring that the people hired by the county to create a safe environment conducive to learning for all students are able to do so by providing them with the necessary guidance. I wish we didn't have to provide them with the guidance, but as we've shown, as we've heard, it's needed. The policy costs nothing to implement. It puts very little burden on teachers and administrators. With all due respect, this is very different than a nut policy. Uh, they, it only requires the adults in the room to use common sense and treat some of their most vulnerable students with basic respect. If you can use a nickname that a student requests, you can use the pronouns that a student requests. Further, as an attorney, I see this as a low-risk, conservative policy. It only applies to transgender students who have shown consistent and uniform assertion of their gender identity or other evidence of their gender identity that it is sincerely held as part of their core identity. So this is not a policy that students are just going to take advantage of on a whim. This is truly about who these children are. Second, it is likely to withstand a legal challenge by providing accommodations for students and parents whose sincerely held beliefs, religious or otherwise, may conflict with the policy. Finally, the policy is very flexible. It simply requires administrations to engage with the needs of all of their students, both transgender and gender nonconforming students, and students whose parents oppose, oppose the policy. To be honest, it merely codifies something that should already go without saying in our schools: respect for all students regardless of their differences and a commitment to their safety. It doesn't cost anything to be kind, respectful, and committed to giving our students the best education we can. We shouldn't need this policy, but based on recent events, it's clear that we do. I urge you to vote in its favor.
Next speaker will be followed by Josh Cole, Janay Williams, and Kim Robinson.
Good evening. How's everyone tonight? My name is Benjamin Litchfield. I also live on Dawson Drive. I am chairman of the Stafford County Democratic Committee. I'm responsible for nominating candidates to the school board, just in case anybody wants to know what I do. I'm also a practicing attorney, like my wife who spoke before me, and I graduated from Howard University School of Law, the premier civil rights institution in the country. We produced luminaries like Charles Hamilton Houston and Thurgood Marshall. Justice Marshall is very important because he argued part of the package of cases that made up Brown v. Board, and you heard about me, or you heard about Brown v. Board when I talked to you in October. I was actually rather angry with what had happened to a transgender student in a local school, and I tasked the school board to respond to that issue with dignity, with compassion, with what Dr. King used to call wisdom, justice, and love. And I'm here to say, Dr. Kishner, you have heeded the call in a way that's responsible, dignified, and shows why we should have our faith in you. Now, I've, I've heard a lot of things tonight, and I had some prepared remarks, but I would like to address the religious liberty argument because, you know, as a practicing attorney, one of the things I had to learn as a baby lawyer in law school was about the First Amendment and about what it means, what, what is exactly compelled speech. And recent case law shows there are several examples where teachers are compelled to speak in certain ways that they may disagree with. They may teach curricula which conflicts with their core values, either conservative or liberal policies that they happen to disagree with on religious, political, fundamental reason, or fundamental, um, reasons they're required to speak in a manner that the school board, the Department of Education, elected officials instruct them to speak. The Supreme Court's been very clear that you have no fundamental right to public employment. And teachers can be disciplined for a number of things. They can be disciplined for having a poster in their classroom that says, "End the war" because it's disruptive, or even a teacher could be disciplined for having an LGBTQ flag. So this argument about compelled speech is really a red herring for you, but as an accommodation to the other side, to Susan Stimson and others, if you feel like you need to strike it, Dr. Kishner, please, by all means, because while they talk about the First Amendment, I believe in the Fourteenth, which says that no state shall deny any person equal protection of the laws. And Brown versus Board of Education was clear: separate but equal, and education has no place in our public schools, and that's what I would say to you tonight. Thank you for your consideration of SB twenty-four twenty. God bless you all.
Good evening, everyone. Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, uh, my name is Joshua Cole. I reside at eleven thirty-eight James Madison Circle in the Falmouth District. I am the president of Stafford County's NAACP, and I am coming before you today in support of policy twenty-four twenty. Um, our branch met last night, and we agreed that we would support this. Part of the mission of the National NAACP is to, uh, support the social, economic, and political equality of all citizens. Um, and so I know many people get caught up in the NAACP National Association Advancement for the Colored People, um, but it also means for all people of color and all people when whatever measures relate to them. Um, so when we're thinking about this policy, I just want to remind you, uh, just a couple of months ago, we found out that Amazon HQ Two was coming to Northern Virginia. And as it goes with jobs in Northern Virginia, many people are going to look for cheaper places to live because they all don't want to live in Crystal City. They can't all afford to live in Crystal City. So many of them are going to be commuters. They're going to live in Fredericksburg. They're going to live in Spotsylvania. They're going to live in Stafford County. And Stafford County has an awesome opportunity right now because there is no other school district in the nation or in the state that has made this type of move. We have the ability to set the standard, be as shining beaking in the United States, and show that we are moving forward. We don't want to have two marks against us. We already had the Confederate flag issue, and now we're having this issue. We have the opportunity to take advantage of it and push forward. Um, and so that's from an economic standpoint, that's from a social standpoint. Um, but then I'm also hearing, you know, as a preacher, you hear all, all these different concerns, uh, coming against my religious liberty. And as a pastor in a Baptist church, in a conservative Baptist church, um, that I might get in trouble for saying this for, uh, but we don't believe in discrimination, period. You know, Stafford County public schools mean there's going to be many different people coming to school here. There's Islamic students, there's Christian students, there's trans students, there's straight students, there are homosexual students, there are all of these many different students, and so we may all have different opinions. We may all disagree, we may all agree, but I think one thing we can agree on is that no one deserves to be discriminated against. And we've already heard it, the different parents and the different teachers on the social media, on all the forums and what they're saying. Um, I just want to remind you that it's Stafford County public schools. That means there's going to be many different people who are here. You may not agree with their lifestyle, you may not agree with what they want to do, but we can agree to agree that no one deserves to be discriminated against. And for all the Christian parents that may be upset of what's going on, let me just remind you, down in Mass Aponics is Fredericksburg Christian Schools, and I'm sure they would take your tuition and your students. You can drive them down to Mass Aponics every day. So we appreciate you, and I ask you to push this and pass this. Thank you.
I'm here today to speak with you all about policy twenty-four twenty. Um, and my name is Janay Williams, and I reside on Charles Street, Fredericksburg, Virginia. By the time I quit teaching high school in Stafford County after four years, I was exhausted. I was exhausted with being a young, black, queer educator, having my morals, pedagogical approach, and even presence in the classroom scrutinized regularly. I was most exhausted with the accounts of harassment, microaggression, and disregard my students of color, my LGBTQ plus students, my neuroatypical and young women students, and all those that existed at the intersections of all of these experiences would share with me daily. I was exhausted because I knew that no matter who I encouraged them to go to, there would be no policy nor infrastructure in place to appropriately resolve nor prevent future instances of the nature. And I knew this intimately because there were none, there were also none to address my own as a cisgender, which means not trans, queer educator. In September twenty-fourteen, my first month of my first year teaching high school in Stafford County, I entered the planning room mid-department conversation regarding the regular decision of a freshman black male student of wearing dresses, makeup, and heels as a thing that we don't allow here, that be, that he better fix before he gets kicked out. This would prove to be emblematic of the core beliefs about and resulting engagement of trans students for the remainder of my time in the county. I commend the superintendent for pushing the county to expand who we include when we say and think of as every student, because what I know to be true is that we cannot teach students that we do not know the unique educational hurdles of, and we cannot do that without acknowledging that they are here. We must commit to seeing them. In a world in which we see and celebrate difference, we acknowledge difference as a thing inherently value, valuable, important, and necessary. We ensure protections for every student that shows up to learn. Thank you.
The next speaker will be followed by Brad Picart and Carmen Greener.
Hi. My name is Kim Robinson. I'm on Montgomery Drive in Stafford, Rock Hill District, I think. Um, I'm, have a totally different tact. I'm not here to debate. Um, I'm here to address twenty-four twenty, but my tact is, I was raised that, you know, you don't have a right to complain about anything unless you have a possible solution for it. So, um, thank you for seeking input from Stafford County parents, Stafford County citizens. Um, if, my, my whole thing is if twenty-four twenty's going to happen, and I think we need to love everybody. That's what Jesus taught. We need to love everybody regardless. But if this, if this is going to go through, um, it's a complex subject, very complex. But after much discussion with friends, neighbors, with their children, um, and spouses in Stafford County, we've, it seems like it boils down to what the federal government calls reasonable accommodations, which is something that you have to do in a federal government office if somebody has an accommodation that they need. So the consensus that I have seen with Stafford County parents is that there be a reasonable accommodation for everybody. Now, you know, maybe this is oversimplifying it, but this is from moms, and this is from children that I have talked to extensively about this, that there be a set of restrooms and locker rooms for everybody: transgender, goats, dogs, cats, whatever, who wants to use them. Then have another set for students who wish to use a restroom or locker room with similar like anatomy. Then you can have a single-seater restroom for anybody to use. Now, when I was in elementary school, I was bullied in a restroom. So let me tell you, I would have loved to have had a single-seater restroom for me to use for the rest of my school career because after being forcibly held in a restroom by, happened to be another girl at the time, I was terrified to walk into restrooms by myself the rest of my school career, and I don't want any child to go through that because it's not fun. Also, this would ensure that all students would have a choice. No one singled out, no one separated, everybody would have a place that they could go, and I love what the little girl said, you know, "I don't care how you pee, just so everyone can have whatever accommodation they feel comfortable in." Now, my daughter wanted to speak tonight, but she has SOEls tomorrow, um, and she asked me to convey that she would like to use a restroom and a locker room with students of like anatomy, but she also believes the above scenario would be fair for everybody involved. This would treat all students fairly. Now, my daughter also has autism. She's been bullied from the time she was in second grade, and she doesn't want anyone bullied, and we don't want any bullying as a family because, let me tell you, it destroys lives. But everyone should be treated fairly. Every Stafford student deserves to feel safe and comfortable, and I know I'm talking about restrooms and locker rooms, but from talking to friends and their daughters, this would accommodate everybody. Thank you.
Hi. I'm Brad Picart. I live in Bull Ridge Drive in Stafford. I'm in the Rock Hill District. I have, uh, two daughters in Stafford County Public Schools, and shocker, I'm here to speak about the same policy. Um, I, really, for me, this, just one point, I think this is just a safety issue for me. Um, I'm reminded of what Target stores have done. You know, over a year ago, they instituted open bathroom policies so you could go into the bathroom that you identified with, and since then, there have been multiple instances of sexual predators taking advantage of the situation. You know, I think transgender people need to be accommodated for, but I think what you're going to do is you're opening, opening up the floodgates for people to abuse it. And, you know, when, with, uh, boys running around our high schools with raging hormones, I just, I think we're kidding ourselves if they're not going to take advantage of the situation, and I, I just fear for the safety of my daughters. So that's all I'd say. Thank you.
Carmen Greener is the next speaker. Now, after, um, the speaker, we don't have anyone else signed up. Okay, we'll discuss that after the speaker. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Carmen Greiner. I live in Spotsylvania. I am here to represent Equality Stafford. I am a master's level counselor, um, practicing in Spotsylvania. I've been practicing for over twenty-five years. I'm a licensed professional counselor, licensed substance abuse treatment practitioner. I have been working with GLT folks, um, as a specialty for the last ten years. Um, we run a transgender program, and we work with both adult and child tran, folks who identify as transgender. Our country is one that has moved through many transitions: slavery, women's rights, indigenous people's rights, civil rights, gay, lesbian rights, immigrant rights, and so forth. We are a country that is progressive and learning to live the Christian ideals of love, the golden rule, and compassion for those who suffer. I haven't heard a whole lot of that tonight. Compassion for those who suffer. Guys, I'm the one on the other end who picks up the pieces and tries to put together a child who was destroyed as they walked out of a bathroom, or as somebody called some effeminate young boy gay, and he wasn't, or someone who identifies as transgender who was maligned by his... Or someone who identifies as transgender, who was maligned by his teacher and told by his teacher that he needed to be who she wanted him to be, not who he wanted to be. I also hope, Dr. Kistner, that you all are talking with professionals as a part of this instead of just lay folks who are putting out stats that I think on some levels are made up. But we shall move on. Trans kids are mentally ill. There is a diagnosis for transgender. We call it gender dysphoria. It is a diagnosis of "I'm sad with what I have." Well, that makes some sense. I don't know that that means that you have schizophrenia, but I don't want to assume how many people in this room are on antidepressants, but I would suggest a lot. And we're not calling them, we're not stigmatizing them. The kids will expose themselves in locker rooms and bathrooms, and I understand what this nice gentleman who spoke before me said, and I get that. But we are a creative people, and this works in some places. The trans kids will attack cis kids. No, that doesn't generally happen. It does sometimes, especially when we have to defend ourselves, but that's not usually the goal. Students will all of a sudden become trans. Kids don't generally do that. Now, there is some contagion, I think, right now in our society, as kids who have always felt transgendered are having a moment to feel freer to talk about their gender identity, which, by the way, is on a continuum and not a male or a female, unlike my esteemed colleague who said biology is biology. Thank you.
All right, Mr. McCosker.
Madam Chair, I'd like, oh, okay, I was going to take a, after this speaker, Madam Chair, five or 10-minute point of-
We just had the last speaker who signed up.
Okay, I'd like a five-minute point of privilege break.
All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. When we come back, if we can have the residents of Stafford. Why don't we just take all the speakers and then, we'll see, let's see how many people want to speak. How many people want to speak to the board? All right. If you could, if we could have the Stafford residents here and the non-Stafford, Stafford County residents over here. That was what you asked for, correct? All right. Stafford County, non-Stafford County. Now, when you come, when you come down, after, everyone who speaks from this point on has not signed up, so that means you have to sign up on the signup sheet on the ledger there when you finish, okay? All right, what is the will of the board? To go forward now? Okay, everyone here, we'll just, we'll move on.
Hi, my name is Molly Murillo, and I live in George Washington District. I'm a student at Dixon Smith Middle School.
If you could speak into the microphone, then people can hear better. Thank you.
I was at the last school board meeting, and I heard some opposition to the proposed policy 2420. When I heard that these people think, when you go into the locker room, you flash your body parts around, let's just be real, that doesn't happen. I go into the locker room every other day to change for gym, and let me tell you, everybody feels uncomfortable and awkward and tries to cover themselves up. If a transgender student came into the locker room, they would feel 10 times worse than going into a locker room that matched their biology, not their gender identity, simply because they are scared, uneducated, or downright bigoted, as we heard of some of our opposition here tonight. This is why we need an anti-discrimination policy to protect LGBTQ kids. Anti-discrimination policy is designed to protect the minority, not the majority. I am only 13 years old, and even I understand that. I wonder if any of the opposition have been to the Stafford County locker room recently? I think not. Please support School Board 2420 and protect kids, all kids. And to the opposition here in the meeting, the information that you think you know so much is completely wrong, false, and horribly misinformed. And if your daughters feel uncomfortable, then they should bring them here down to speak. You are hurting people with your fake news. You are hurting kids. You are hurting people here in this meeting. Shame.
Excuse me, we need you to sign in, everyone. When you finish, sign in. Thank you.
Hi, Carol Monore. I live in the George Washington District, and I wasn't going to speak tonight, because you guys all know where I stand on this. I've spoke to you multiple times, but I felt the need to come and just say a few things about what's been said. First and foremost, this is an absolute appropriate response to what happened with the lockdown drill. The reason that that emergency drill happened and there was any question as to where a student should go was because this policy doesn't exist, and because there has been questions about whether or not to allow students access to restrooms. So this is an absolute perfect response to that emergency situation. And then I started thinking, what else could I say that maybe you haven't heard? I actually went back and listened to comments from a few board meetings from years ago, as well as from this time around. And a lot of the opposition is talking about the other children that are not transgender, that are not, you know, affected, let's say, by this policy. And so as a parent of three teenage daughters who are not transgender, one of the hardest conversations I've had to have with them is when, and I'm going to try not to get emotional about this, they weren't being discriminated against, but they've witnessed it again and again and again in their school, by adults sometimes and sometimes by their peers. And one of the hardest conversations I had to have is when my daughter, who's white, cisgender, who said to me, "Mom, I don't know what to say when people say these things in front of me. I don't know how to respond." So it is for all of the other children that this policy is needed, because they need to see that a safe, learning environment that includes everyone is the way it's supposed to be, and that they aren't supposed to hear those comments from their peers or their teachers. And they are supposed to feel comfortable to say, "You can't say that in front of me. That's not okay." Now, this was specifically in terms of race, because they have a daughter, I have a daughter who is adopted and who is a different race than mine, and so the conversation started in that domain. Kids say things in front of me because they don't know my sister's black. And then it went on. But teachers and kids say things about kids who are transgender in front of me, and I know it's wrong, and it's not okay. Teachers and kids say things in front of me about children who are of a different country, and it's not okay. And they want to know how to stand up and advocate. And I want them to know that that's exactly the appropriate response. And so it is for all of the other children in Stafford County Public Schools that may not identify as transgender, that this policy needs to be in place, because they need to know that a safe, inclusive environment for all students is the way it should be, and that they should be able to speak up and advocate for their peers who are different than them. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Elaine Callender of Falmouth District. The times, they are a-changing. When I was a K through 12 student, gender identity would never have been discussed in a public meeting, probably not at all. But it is good now that we are more open. Congratulations on working on Policy 2420. There needs to be a policy that respects all students and values all students. One reason I support protections for LGBT students is because of people I have known. I'd like to tell you about one individual in particular. When I was in high school, her name was Nancy. She was greatly admired for her intelligence and her positive attitude. She was student body president, editor of the school newspaper, on the debate team, et cetera. She was valedictorian and went to the prestigious MIT for college. Nancy didn't stay in touch after high school. Fifty years later, I located her on Facebook, thanks to her brother. Her name was now Lee. She was head of an LGBTQ organization in Massachusetts. I know my friend would support our school system having an inclusive policy regarding gender identity. So, so do I. But, by the way, Nancy attended her 50th high school reunion with her partner in hand. Thank you.
Ms. Callender, if you could please sign in.
Good evening, board members, and Superintendent Kistner. I rise, I rise today in opposition to 2420.
Excuse me, could you give us your name?
Yes, my name is Mark Murphy. I'm a resident of Acquah Harbor, I'm a pilgrim cove. I'm also a son, a father of five sons, every one of which has been an honor roll, National Honor Society. One graduated William Mary, one graduated American University, top honors, was the national debate champion in the country all the circuit. Also a distant relative of Martin Luther King. My grandmother's maiden name, grandmother's maiden name was King. A lot of reference here to civil rights and minorities and various things. Also a preacher for the ones who spoke in that regard. We are to love the people. Martin Luther King did not say, "We love and we do whatever comes to our mind." Your rights ended at the tip of my nose. And in many other things that are referred, that wasn't a direct quote from him, but in many other things, the direct direction of it. This policy is not make, should not create a superclass whereby the 3% or whatever the percentage of people who identify themselves as transgender, transgender, or any other type, then become a superminority above all the other groups. The Bible doesn't teach that. He teaches us to love the people. The lady who spoke, the counselor, and the lady who's a counselor, and the lawyers, about 10 of my first cousins are lawyers, and the lady who spoke, she's a counselor. My wife is a doctor too, is a doctor, and is also a counselor. The point of this point is that those people in this, as she said, we should speak to professionals, not just all the comments that are made. There are several cases before the Supreme Court now identifying this. The legislature in Richmond is dealing with this. How should we, as Stafford, push forward past all that and say, "We will decide this now"? We are, we, we have concluded all those things. We need more information. We need to gather more data for the impact on the students that are transgender, those that are not. What are the stats across the country? And not just assume that off on the fly, we will take this because we feel badly about previous historical wrongs. Like I said, that's the case. And one of my grandfathers founded a small college right in 1881 in North Carolina. I know, and as clearly I'm a black man, so I'm not unclear about discrimination, but it is not, it is not the case that you can put everything under an umbrella and say, "We just do whatever comes to our mind." You need more data. It should be scientific, as said, more than the two attorneys that spoke, and more than one counselor that spoke. And that should be an informed decision before this board makes any decision that impacts our children, that will impact them going forward for the years to come. And I'm the person also that picks up the pieces, that prays for them, that deals with them when they're off to us, when they're suicidal for the lady that spoke. So you're not the only person that deals, picks up the pieces. So that's, those are my comments, and I pray that you will consider it.
And if you could please sign in, Mr. Murphy.
Hello. I'm Maya Guy. I live in Acquah Harbor, and I'm here because I support every student, all 27,000 students in Stafford County. And if that means we need a policy to address discrimination that we've heard over and over again that's occurring under your nose, then we need a policy. The teachers are discriminating against our children. You have to do something. I don't understa, my kids are cisgender, five Christian kids who identify as how they were born, but I am disgusted that adults are bullying anyone's kids. They don't have to be mine for me to care. My Lord teaches me that. I don't understand how we can be against protecting children, whether we agree with their lifestyle or their sexual orientation, none of that matters. I'm not God, I can't judge. But I'm a Christian, I'm going to love you, and I realize not everyone's a Christian. But dang it, we're Americans then. We should care about other people. We should care about the less, the less than, the minority, whether it be their race or whatever. I had a speech, but I'm just really utterly disgusted that people are against an anti-discrimination policy just because it doesn't affect their children, or because they believe their interpretation of their religion or their values are under attack. I can guarantee you, your kids are in school with transgender kids, they are not going to rub off. Your kid isn't going to come home gay or transgender, just like the black didn't rub off when people didn't want kids to go to school. I mean, we sound like the 1950s up in here, and I can't believe it. I moved here because I wanted my kids to be safe, and they are, but they're also tolerant. And they're disgusted, not by the students, but by the parents. They're telling me, and I'm on their Snapchat, because I'm nosy, and they're like, my mom and my dad, or whoever, my Nate, like, this is crazy. They don't care. No one is going to expose themselves. Someone said that, like, you know, we have rights and stuff, but we can't take our clothes off in the hallway or something. Yeah, you can't. That's got nothing to do with being transgender. It's got nothing to do with it. They're not going to walk around saying who they are, because really what they want is for you not to know. Thank you. Please support this.
Howdy, folks. My name is Dave Gent. I didn't know exactly which line to get into. I live in Spotsylvania County. I teach at AG Wright Middle School, so I just, I picked one. I hope that works out. My day hit the 12-hour march during the film club meeting a couple hours ago, and we've all been here a while, so if it's all right, I'm going to keep this real short. I'm just going to relay a conversation I had with a student. So this happened very recently. They came back from break with an idea to change how they were perceived. They came to me because they wanted to talk to a staff member that they trusted. They were having some indecision about how to address a pronoun change, and they came to me for advice. I try to never tell a student what to do or think, but instead help them puzzle through till they can get to their own answer. So I asked the student, "What is it about the change that is making you anxious? What is making you nervous?" This was their verbatim response. Come on, everybody knows Stafford hates trans kids. That's our reputation. That's what our students think about us. Not previous students, not students from some other county, or who went to school in some other decade. One of our students, a week ago, that's a 13-year-old kid who genuinely believes that you hate them. That's not a reputation I can be okay with. But it's not something that I can fix in the big picture. I can fix it in my room, maybe a couple feet from my door. The Supreme Court can't fix that. You can fix that for Stafford. Please do. I don't want my students thinking we hate them.
Mr. Jett, excuse, excuse me, sir, could you please sign in?
Hi, my name is Alex Buskirk. I'm a middle school student at AG Wright. I was his old student. I was trying to come up here to talk about the policy that everyone's talking about. And a lot of people have had a lot of really different opinions about it, but I think that, like, being different isn't something that people can decide on, and being trans isn't easy for anyone, and no one decides, no one wakes up one day and decides that they want to be transgender. You were born like that, and you can't change it. And for people to be separated from everyone else is truly an awful experience, and I think with this new policy, we can really help people who are different, to help them feel like they're like anyone else in school. And, I don't know, like, a lot of people can have a lot of, a lot of people can have the opinions that they want, but I don't think it's okay for us to come this far with something so great and then just lose it.
Good evening. My name is Mary Basilia, and I live on Falmouth Drive in the Falmouth District. I have two children in Stafford County Schools. They've been going since they were kindergartners, and their backpacks were almost bigger than they were, and now they're both taller than I am. My daughter's 11th grade at Stafford High, and my son is 8th grade at Drew. And they're both straight, they're both smart, they're, we got no dog in this fight, so as to speak, except it's just the right thing. We support 2420. My son came with me to the meeting, I guess it was October, my daughter came in December. They both had stuff tonight, so they couldn't, but as others have mentioned, the whole idea- Dark parking lot, woman, cars, kinda scary than I do for either herself or me going into any bathroom, although I'm sure there can be isolated incidents, you know, schools, out of schools. And as other speakers have also said or alluded to, I just can't believe that here in 2019, we're having to fight an uphill battle for something of inclusion, of protection of a group, of a minority group. I'm old enough to remember being bussed to school. I lived in Alexandria. I don't remember a whole lot about it. It sort of seemed like a big deal to some of the grownups, but to me, it just frankly was sort of a pain in the neck to have to ride a long bus ride instead of just being able to walk to my elementary school. And, you know, other than that, it was just sort of life, you know, that's just what happened. And I'm sure it was a big deal in the media. I've read some stuff, I've seen the history books, I know about the marches and Brown versus the Board and all that, but in other words, to the kids, it's just the way it is. And we look back, we say, gosh, how stupid we were, that whole, the desegregation, what was the point and why did we make such a big deal out of it and this now? And it's always such a fight to just get the most basic kindnesses and the right thing. And I hope you guys will, as we have other people have also said, I'm just parroting, I guess, repeating, reiterating, move forward that we've come this far. Let's just keep progressing and thank you.
And like Ms. Hazard said, we had several different issues on, up for discussion tonight. And so I'm gonna take a hard right down Awkward Street and I'm sure you'll loop back around to this conversation, but I would like to talk to you all about the exam change that came to us this week. The calendar has been brought before this board or a board and our community for input and issues two years ago, voted on with ample options for snow days, then plot twist. Now our kids are being asked to go to school three full days with two exams on two of those days. One exam and a full day of school is a lot, but two exams and the rest of a day is not only unfair, but it is unkind to both the students and the teachers. The students are stressed, not sleeping well, some of your sports teams are going to districts, so they go straight from school, straight to a sport, straight home, probably about nine or 10 at night and have two exams the next day. Teachers have to grade these exams, input the grades, make lesson plans for the next semester, and in some cases at the high school, they're finishing a year and getting ready to start another. When we struggle to provide perks for our teachers, you are now electing to eliminate the opportunity for them to complete their work during school hours. Elementary school teachers still get their half-days and you just took away two for the middle school and high school with no chance to replace. I feel that we should be more transparent by bringing items such as this kind of a change through our school board and our different advisory committees. Thank you.
Ms. Randall, did you sign in?
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Heather Steffel. I guess I'm coming back into the lane here. There's absolutely some people that need to be accommodated with the, with general neutral washrooms and that's totally understandable. I never want to see a student feel bullied or uncomfortable and I'm all for, and I commend you guys for taking the time, putting this into a slow mode rather than speeding through, which is how I think many of us felt at the last meeting, that this was being done very quickly and over the holidays. So I, I just want to commend you for taking the time here. But I want to say that a, but that the majority of our school system, but this is representing a minority of our school system, this school policy is a violation of the civil rights of so many of our children. The key to this whole thing is not just the privacy and the rights of just one student's, it's the rights of all of our students and their parents. And you can't interpret federal law and state law and oppose it on everyone else and say, you're accommodating everyone because you're not accommodating everyone. And I just want to hope that you guys will do your due diligence and take your, take your time with this. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Al Martinez. I actually wasn't gonna speak today, but I just wrote this while I was sitting down over there. I attended Brookpoint High School for two years after moving here from Prince William County. I actually attended the school board meeting over there, so I've seen every argument such as separating us over and over again. I've been separated. I've had to go to a different bathroom that was across the school from all my classes and sometimes those bathrooms were even locked. I'm a clumsy person. I've spilled water or something on the floor. I was unable to get paper towels because I wasn't able to use any of the bathrooms that were nearby. I've had to switch classes because students and teachers weren't respecting me. I even got nominated for prom king and they called home and asked my parents if it was okay that I was nominated for king and not queen. I'm not a normal kid, but I deserve to live in life like everyone else. I deserve a normal high school experience. I'm a kid, we're all kids. All we want is to be kids and I'm asking that you let us have the chance to do that. Thank you.
I'm gonna read from this so I don't lose my train of thought. First, I wanted to thank the Board of Supervisors for staying with the original agenda to allow people from outside of Stafford to speak.
Excuse me, could you tell us who you are?
Oh, yes, that was the next line.
No, you're not from Stafford.
I am Dee Jacobson from Locust Grove, Virginia County, Orange County, and I am here in support of 24/20. This is not my first time I have driven 45 minutes to speak to this board on this issue. I'm here today because Stafford County stands at the precipice of leading Virginia students' schools to include the one my granddaughter attends and to significantly better future where equal means equal. Being here has been an eye-opener. I do want to assure this board that cis students exposed to transgender students will not go into anaphylactic shock. Even my 16-year-old daughter, who has shellfish allergies, has that discernment. She wanted me to come here because she wants her fellow students to feel safe, to feel free to be who they are and without prejudice and free from bullying. We as a society would do well to move away from policies that leave pockets of students I don't even know what to say, except that I beg you to continue to move in the direction that you're going in. Enough said.
All right, thank you. All right, I see no one else that wants to speak before the board, last call. All right, we gotta take her here. If there's anyone else that would like to speak, please line up because we're going to be moving on to our, rest of our agenda following the public comments.
I'll make this quick. Thank you. My name is Luke Ans. I live at 305 Ironside Cove here in Stafford. Thank you for giving this the time and attention it deserves. I think if there's one thing I've heard tonight is the theme of bullying and I think that the parents here have a legitimate concern for bullying in our schools. I don't think that's a new trend, but I think it's a trend that this particular issue has brought really to new light. Respecting fellow classmates has been an issue. It was in the 90s when I was a student and it is today. Teaching our students to respect anyone is probably a priority that we need to take from this argument, but I would express it in a way that if there was not an aspect of transgender, let's say it was any person or any student that had some element that maybe other kids felt they needed to make fun or disenfranchise. I have a seventh grader who's a straight A student. How popular is he? He's made fun of. In fact, some of the arguments I heard tonight have been directed at my seventh grade student. Now, is there a policy against disenfranchising a seventh grade, straight A student? What am I supposed to do? What am I supposed to tell him? So this argument of bullying, I think, is really the issue that's at heart here. I think this is the issue. Families need the counseling available to students who are going through any kind of life issue. We need to make that available to them. One policy is not gonna fix this. We're gonna be here every quarter creating policies. It's never gonna end. We're gonna be back in the same position, there's gonna be the next group and the next group. It's never gonna end. You're never gonna fix this policy, Dr. Kizer. It's not gonna be done, it'll never be done. No one's ever gonna be happy with it. You need to go ahead and start leading this school division through championing values in our schools and in our families, okay? Please champion them in our homes. You're never gonna do it through policy. It has to be in the home, working with families. You took up your position as school board members. I don't think you did it because you wanted to put something in the gym or you wanted to have a special project. You took it because you knew the families of Stafford County. I encourage you, take my advice, look at the families in Stafford County, focus on them. Don't create policies. Focus on families. Please do that tonight. Thank you.
If you could please sign in.
Yes.
Mr. Ant, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarah McClelland. I live in the George Washington District. I have three cisgender children in the Stafford County school system, two in middle school and one in high school. I just wanted to say thank you to you, Dr. Kizner, and this board for taking this very difficult issue under consideration and I know it's hard. I also want to remind you that an anti-discrimination policy is designed to protect the minority. That's what discrimination policies are. Dr. Kizner said it at the last school board meeting and I thought it was absolutely exactly right. I hear a lot of parents talking about, what about me? What about me? What about me? What about my kids? What about my kids? What about my kids? This policy is to protect the children in the minority. We don't, we don't need a policy like this if every kid in the school is transgender. It's, it's, it would be a moot point. The reason we need this policy is because the transgender population is a vulnerable minority. So I wanted to point that out. I also wanted to say, I think Stafford County does focus on families. I think Stafford County does focus on values and I think it's evidenced by the fact that we're all here having this conversation, that we have this policy drafted. I really urge you to support it. It's a great policy and it's gonna make kids' lives a lot safer. I'm a, I'm a health professional, I'm also licensed. We have gender dysphoria in the DSM-5, okay? It's, that's considered a mental illness if it's in the DSM-5. It's not a mental illness if it does not interfere with your ability to function, okay? These kids may have gender dysphoria. Their gender dysphoria is because they are singled out as different and mistreated and need things like an anti-discrimination policy. We solve this problem about helping these kids feel inclusive, included and not excluded on all levels. I predict that the DSM-6 will not even contain gender dysphoria because it will be cured. Why? Because it will no longer interfere with anybody's ability to function. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tracy Brooks. I am in the Stafford Middle School District. I have two cisgendered children. You have heard my son speak multiple times. I never speak because I'm angry. I'm gonna be nice, but I'm gonna tell you. My 11-year-old daughter was attacked more than once in a Stafford Middle School girls' bathroom, not by a trans child, by another cisgendered girl. She's not scared. My son isn't scared of trans kids in the locker room, in the gym, in the cafeteria, in the hallway, hanging out at our house. They're not scared of that. They're scared of what policy this board may or may not pass so that when they stand up and they look adults in the eye and they say, "All means all," they mean that and they want your support so that when they're, they get pushed back for saying that, they go, "I have all these adults behind me. I have a policy behind me to stand up for my friends, to stand up for people that I don't know because that's what we're supposed to do." That's what I thought Stafford County Schools was about. We've been here four years. You guys are moving forward and you'll hear more from, you'll hear more from Nate. He'll be back. He has things to talk to you about. But they're not afraid of trans kids. They're afraid you're not gonna protect them. Thank you.
I see no one else that wishes to address the board, so we will close the public comment period. Come to board reports and comments. Do we have any board committee reports? Dr. Chase.
Okay, so the Finance and Budget Committee met on December 17th. We had asked for and received a report on school site funds. As you know, each of our school principals receives a certain amount of money per pupil to spend on their individual school's needs. I asked our clerk, Missy Hall, to send you copies of the report. I believe she did so. If you have any questions or concerns, let us know. Following up on our discussion of the superintendent's proposed gender identity and expression policy at the last board meeting, we discussed the need for more information about bathrooms and locker rooms in our schools. I believe that staff will be getting back to us with some kind of inventory, although I think they have a lot on their plate right now, but. We also received a presentation of a proposal for compressing the teacher salary scale. We currently have 37 steps. A number of our comparison counties only have 30. Stafford County Schools may be less competitive because it takes longer to get to the top of the salary scale. I believe that handouts were sent to the entire board and we can talk with Dr. Kizner or Mr. Fulmer to get more information. And finally, we received a report of the first quarter budget transfers for FY '19 and those have also been sent to you. The next meeting of the Finance and Budget Committee will be January 16th at 6:00 PM. That's it.
Any other board committee reports, Ms. Hazard?
I'll just make a quick one. The Legislative Committee, we are trying to get together before the session begins in earnest, so stay tuned, but I know there's been some reach out and great work being done, so, but I just thought we needed a quick together and we'll send those either talking points or something to other board members, so remember, strengthen numbers.
Any other committee reports? Mr. McCosker?
I just want to mention, we did not meet for the joint schools, but we did have a superintendent chat. It was a condensed meeting. And I just want to let you know that the new, the new joint schools, please get with Superintendent Kizner about, you know, the way forward for that charter, is that still on the table? And, and, and the committee rules. So you're in a prime position now to start building it from scratch.
Okay, that brings us to board member comments. Do we have a volunteer who wants to start?
I'll start.
Ms. Young.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that yesterday, I was at the Career and College Pathway Night. It used to be called Signature Program. It covered programs such as IB, Governor's School, JROTC, STAT, which included automotive, customer technology and medical, which included nursing also. I don't want to exclude anyone, but it was at Brookpoint, it was packed, we ran out of brochures, but there was a table, for example, that talked about PSATs and SAT studies, so it was great.
Thank you. Ms. Decatur, would you like to go next?
Oh, I hung out with Pam Cale. She was there.
Happy New Year. Thank you, guys, for coming out and being courteous with each other. Thank you for listening. As always, I like to just make sure you guys understand that we appreciate you, and please continue to listen to each other. I've seen a lot of faces and hair change tonight, and you guys are coming together, and I think that we're going to get through this and find some way to compromise and make sure everyone feels good about what the board is going to do. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Hazard?
Again, happy 2019. I'll say to, which I said last year, because last year I had a senior who was sitting there. For those who have seniors, I know Dr. Chase does, I always give my "don't forget. It's not over. Stay strong till the end." I want to thank all those who have come, for those who have sent information, please continue to do so. It does not fall on deaf ears. I'm a reader, so thank you for sending the things. I would, would like to ask for the board to be able to receive a, an update at some point concerning the number of long-term subs in the school. I know we tracked that very much at the beginning of the year, and I just would like to, at some point, especially as we head into budget preparations, I think we need to understand that interplay. And not just long-term subs. My question would also be for how many teachers do we have that are accepting additional responsibility to, to make it work? I know that's the, one of the greatest things about our school system, is we do have everybody pinching in and making this a great place, but I also think we need to have a handle on that so that we can make really good decisions going forward. As I said, if you make resolutions this year, resolve to get involved, because there's plenty of issues that are coming forward in your community and in your world, and get involved.
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Egan?
I will keep it very short by just saying happy new year to everyone, and I do have a question or something to notify you about, or you, Dr. Kizner. The flashing school zone sign that was in front of Brookpoint is no longer there. Did you all know that? Going eastbound on Courthouse Road, it just disappeared. It's, it's not there. The one coming westbound on Courthouse, before you get to Brookpoint, that one is there and it's working, but the one that is really needed because of the high amount of traffic going towards Brookpoint High School, there's nothing telling the, anybody, whether it's the students driving or regular cars going to the VRE station, to slow down. So, we've got a, we've got our security guy out there directing traffic, and he's a sitting duck. So, I don't know if you knew about it, if VDOT knows, or if Sheriff's Department knows, but I just wanted to bring your attention so we can get it taken care of and get it replaced. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. McOsker?
Yes, I do. Turn on my microphone here. So, first, happy new year. I hope, I'm glad everyone got back safe and had a restful, hopefully, holiday break. So, we, you know, we've got a tough, busy year coming up. We have our normal activities as a school, budget, normal school business, but we have the added opportunity to try to fix some of our elementary school zones with a redistricting. This is the first time, I've been on the board seven years now, and this has been the first time that we've had this, this massive redistricting. It's not going to be a pleasant, it's not going to be a pleasant deal, you know? I've got four kids, got two in college now, and I got two in middle school. So, you know, no one wants their kids pulled out of schools that they're, they have connections with and lines of communications with the teachers and the principals. So, so it's going to be a tough year, and the board's up to, up to the task. We'll be looking forward to your comments and all that. Make sure you stay connected online. The other thing is, tonight, thanks so much for the folks coming out for 2420. You know, both sides, it's good as a board member to sit up here, just like it always is, that, you know, you hear both sides, and you kind of, you kind of mull over the pros and the cons. You think about your community that you represent. You think about what your duty is as a board member. Do you represent your, your folks and your community, or do you represent a position that you hold? That's the, I guess that's, that's the question, right? You know? So, what, what do you do? Do you do what you think is right, or do you do what your, what your community thinks is right? So, those are some of the things that I, I know, not just me up here, but I'm sure the other board members are, are kind of going back and forth with us, you know, and they're talking about it. And, you know, the other thing is that a lot of folks come up, and they're like angry about, and this is, this is a topic that gets folks angry. It, it is. But, but I'll tell you something. Out of the hundred and eighty-some-odd school divisions in this state and this Commonwealth, we're the only ones to bring this forward for discussion at all. There's a reason for that. It's called pigeonholing something that you don't like. It's real easy. I don't want to talk about it. I'm going to pigeonhole it. And you'll never, Superintendent, you'll never get this on the agenda at all. That could have been done quite easily, I think. All right? But we didn't. We took this policy, and we, we took it head-on, and we, we heard our constituents to say, "Hey, we want to talk about this," and that's exactly what we're doing. So, you know, again, I applaud Dr. Kizner, but I applaud, applaud the board for not pigeonholing this, this issue. And so, you know, that, that, there's something to be said for that. There's a reason that there's no other school division in the nation, or in, in the state of, in the Commonwealth of Virginia, that does not have a policy on this issue. There's a reason, okay? There's a reason. It's tough business. That's the reason, so. Yeah, that's it.
Dr. Chase?
So, I also want to say happy new year to everybody, and with redistricting coming up, I can now say I've visited all seventeen elementary schools, and I want to thank the principals at Garrisonville, Park Ridge, Margaret Brent, Winding Creek, and Rock Hill for meeting with me and showing me their schools. And I continue to be incredibly impressed with all of Stafford County's elementary schools. And I think while it will be hard for some families to have to move, I can tell you that whatever school you get moved to is, is wonderful. Also, I was really impressed with the condition of the school buildings. Our facilities and operations have done a great job of keeping them up. Lots of principals were showing off their libraries. They were really happy with those improvements. The one exception, of course, is Ferry Farm, and I think that, I said elementary schools? I think, I think, I think we are trying to address Ferry Farm, and I hope that we will. I also attended a winter concert at Stafford High School, and it was phenomenal, and so I just want to commend Mr. Steenstra, Mr. Evler, and Ms. Zeitz for all of their hard work. And finally, Susan Randall mentioned the exam policy. I would just like to say, as a board member, let's have a clear, whatever we decide to do about the exams, let's decide before we give the exams. Let's not do what we did last year where some students knew the exams didn't count, some students didn't know the exams count, okay? Let's, let's get it clear this year. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy new year, and suggest we all get some rest before we, we start racing. And that's what we're going to be doing on this board for the, the next couple months. I mean, we've got a lot on our plate, and these are really, really important issues. And I would hope that this board will work together wherever we're sitting for the benefit of all our students and our community, and remember why we're here. We are here for Stafford County Public Schools. I appreciate your questions, Mr. McOsker, and as the senior on the board, in terms of age, as well as starting my twentieth year here this year, I have to say that I have always put my constituents and community first, because I may have very personal opinions about things, but, you know, as an elected official, I'm not here because of what I personally feel or what I want to do. You know, this, we have a responsibility. So, number one on our responsibility is to listen, to put it out there, and to give the community a chance to comment. This is, this is on the, you know, the, the policy that we've, you know, we're under consideration, and I appreciate the revisions that Dr. Kizner has, has made. I appreciate him putting it out there, you know, with his advisory groups. But as I, I said when this first came out, I want to hear from the Stafford community. I mean, I welcome everyone who comes here for their three minutes, but as you can tell, it's a little difficult to say what you want to say in three minutes, and I would hope at some point, when we get through some of these other items on our, our plate, you know, we can bring this out to the community and have, you know, public hearings, town hall meetings. However, you know, is the best way to, to get that response, anyway. I don't want to take up too much time tonight. I, I would say I appreciate your allowing me to be chairman again, but it's not that much fun, you know? But, but I'm, I'm willing to do it because I, I think it is, it is very important, and we need, we need to work together. So, I would ask everyone to think, before we meet on Saturday, we're giving up our, our Saturday morning, part of the afternoon, to get together to talk about things. So, let's just think about where we want to go as a board, and, you know, what our objective is, and why, why we're here. So, that, that's, that's more on a personal note, but we'll move along. And fortunately, I'm last. Dr. Kizner is done. Moves us to our single action item on the agenda tonight. The award of a service contract to Precision Door and Hardware of Fredericksburg, Virginia, in the amount of $143,985 from FY19 operating funds for installation of additional card readers at all schools. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the installation, the contract for additional card readers at all schools.
Okay, motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion?
Just my, I just want to bring back the note that I made last time. I really do believe that I want, that the board needs to get that safety audit, RFP, or whatever we need to do. We committed to this at the beginning of the year, and we're midway through the year. Like I said, I am approving this, but in the future, I do think we, that's something we committed to our community as well. So, I would like to make sure that we get that moving.
I see Dr. Kizner taking notes on that, so. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. We have three information items. The first item is approval of the Phoenix Center for Innovative Learning as a new name for the Alternative Education Program. Ms. Hazard, do you have anything you want to add to this agenda item?
I would, I would just like to note, I am ecstatic that we will have an alternative name for our alternative education, because there's so many misnomers made from that. And the Phoenix, as we, those who have attended the graduation ceremony know, is the symbol for, that has been adopted by the students there, and the committee that was involved in this also had a, a poll done with the students of what name they preferred. So, really wasn't us. We just pushed a few to them, and this is what the students there liked.
You know, I'm, I'm just wondering, we have a graduation coming up at the end of this month. Would it be helpful for the school if this were moved to action? I mean, they're going to have a...
I see an agenda or something to, to hand out. I don't know if they have to print it up.
It's already on there. It was already called, something is on there for Phoenix the last time I went.
Well, it was the Phoenix Award.
Yeah.
That was, that was an award, but, but for, for the school. And I would encourage
everyone to, to go to that ceremony. In fact, thank you for, to HR for rearranging the dates because there was conflict with another thing we have later this month. We'll be getting together a lot. Is there, is there any interest in moving this up? I haven't heard any controversy about, about this name.
I don't. I'm just trying to make sure that there's no issue in the policy. Just making sure. I mean, I'm willing to waive it.
Well, names...
It should be brought for the first meeting.
Well, we just have guidelines for names. We don't even have a policy for names. We just have guidelines.
I'd be willing to waive that, to do this, but I want to just make sure we don't have any hiccup. Will be brought before the school board at the first meeting following the forty-five day committee term. I don't know what that means.
Oh, that means from when the committee's appointed.
Yeah, there isn't even anything in the guidelines. It says it has to be on twice.
No, that's, that's what I was checking. That, that was really what...
And guidelines are not policy.
No. If so, I would ask that the new, the naming of the new center be moved to action.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? None? All right, do you have a motion, Ms. Hazard?
Yes, I have a motion that we approve the Phoenix Center for Innovative Learning as the new name for our alternative education program effective immediately.
Second.
All right. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Decatur. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? All right. We now have a new name, and, and the graduation's fantastic if you have a, a chance to come to that. Brings us to eleven, well, it's not eleven, I guess. It's still eleven, isn't it, Missy? Yeah, it's still eleven. We only changed up to seven. All right. Award of change order, $197,763 for changes to construction performance period and replenishment of project contingency, $79,568.10 for the repair interior finishes project, AG Wright Middle Schools and Garrisonville Elementary School. Are there any questions about this item?
Now you start.
No, it's, it's okay. I was kind of speaking for you.
I have several questions, but in the interest of, I can set them, but I will, my overall concern is that I can't, I'm trying to understand the replace the AG Wright floor and bleachers being part of the interior finishes project, because I cannot find the gym replacement, which, believe me, I agree with, I'm, I've been in it, is not then on a three-yard... It just goes to me, and I know the board has heard it, we need to prioritize the things that need to be done, and when you see things that do not meet code, I think those need to be the priority items. I will send my questions, though, in the interest of not monopolizing time tonight, but I just...
Thank you, Ms. Hazard. Ms. Decatur, did you have any comments?
Not at this time.
Anyone else? Ms., Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I just, using money from the interest that's available, that money wasn't planned to be used for anything else. I just didn't quite understand what's going on there. Can anybody give me a little clarity, or just talk?
Yes, ma'am. With bond VPSA funds we borrow, while we have those funds, they generate interest while we're spending them. And so, there's a goal not to achieve what they call arbitrage, which is you want to spend that money within a two-year period, so that you don't earn a tremendous amount of interest. But, interest does occur. And so, part of that interest needs to be used by the locality, the school division. Back, it could go into your CIP projects. It can, it can be applied to anything. So, this was just an option that was identified. We have two bonds that are closing, and those bonds were part of what the money was borrowed for, to fund this particular project. So, it is, it is, in my opinion, somewhat appropriate to consider that. Again, if the board chooses to consider that and approves it, we would have to certainly ask the board of supervisors to budget and appropriate those funds. Did I answer your question?
Yes, you did.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, I'm, you, you said a lot, and I'm not sure if I understood everything, but first you mentioned it has to be used in the localities. Are you saying that it has to be used within certain districts?
No. What I'm saying is when we borrow funds, and I'm sorry if I wasn't clear, when, when the locality borrows funds from VPSA, and that's what the school division does, it earns interest while, while we have those dollars. And so, and so, in the past, we've used those interest dollars to fund capital projects and different things. And so, it's going to happen. This money is generated. The school board, working with Dr. Kizner, can choose to use that money to go towards the capital improvement program, and, and to go back and buy down debt, or to help fund future projects. And so, it's, it's, we're going to generate those dollars. And so, in the past, they've gone into a construction contingency fund to be used for, again, projects that you guys have approved. So, this is just an option for you to consider.
So, I have a hard time approving this right now, and it's nothing against Rock... I also visited every single elementary school and most middle schools and high schools, and they're looking really good. So, you've done a really great job, except for Ferry Farm. Isn't there something that we could do to take this money and start some work at Ferry Farm? I, I don't know how it works. I'm just asking.
Let me, Ferry Farm Project's moving forward.
It's moving forward?
Just so you know, it's...
Okay, signed off?
Forward. The board approved the plan. We went to the county for additional funds. We have not received a yes or no, so we're going with the plan that you approved. And we have sent, Mr. Foley has asked for additional information. We have forwarded him the additional information, and, but just, I just want to make sure...
And, but just, I just want to make sure, you know, I just want to make sure that the board is aware that what you, I don't know when it was, a month ago or so.
Yeah.
That that plan is, is moving forward. In fact, I got an email today. I think you got it also from the architects with some updated information.
Yeah, it would be nice if I've gotten that update. But in addition to that, I remember one meeting that we had. There were certain items on the list that were not, that were not up to code or spec or something. And I'm wondering if we are taking those projects into consideration also. I mean, I understand bleacher, is it, if it's broken and individuals are, you know, if something that needs to happen, then that's fine. But I just want to make sure that, I, I don't know what the priorities were. Like, how did we decide that this, this is what we're going to do with?
Well, there's several questions there, and I'll be happy to try to answer them. Let me just correct myself. The interest generated from the VPSA bonds have to go and be applied to the projects that they were borrowed against.
That's the first question I asked you.
Okay, so hopefully I answered that. I think I answered it incorrectly at first, saying that we tried to do that, but it's been used in the past. We try and we're required to do that.
That's a policy. That's what we have, that's the policy.
From VPSA, they want us to use those dollars against what we borrowed.
We have in this conversation.
So, but the projects, and to kind of answer Ms. Hazard's concern, in the CIP, it's, and I can go back and provide Dr. Kizner the information. But the project, the gym floor and the bleachers were identified to be replaced at a certain time in the CIP. And it's been, been tracked there. We feel that there is an issue there. We feel that it, there is starting to be a safety issue there. It was always part of the project. Because the money for that hasn't been committed yet, we said the board may choose not to go through with that particular part of the project because it's still available to fund this change order. Now, the change order is, is important because we are contracted to do the work. The performance period for that work has been shortened by three weeks, which is an eternity for our compressed summer work. So that's a very significant issue. And in order for us to get the work that is contracted with a contractor done in time, we have to pay, at least we negotiated, subject to the board approval, we negotiated a fee to do that in a shorter time period. Board can always, you know, terminate the contract. I do not recommend doing that. I think these improvements, the board saw that this program of improving these schools with these interior finishes is very important to continue to keep our schools at the level that the community and the board expects. We did that at AG Wright last summer. We renovated that portion. It just happens to be Garrison was the second phase of that. And they got stuck with the summer that got shortened. It could have been the opposite way around. We could have been finished with Garrison last, last year, and AG Wright could have been the school that was in this position. It just happened to be we've selected AG Wright first in this two-summer project. It is one project. It just happens to be that school is physically connected in all one facility. So I do believe, it's my opinion, that I think the board needs to wrestle with this change order and, and figure out a way to fund it. These are two options that were presented to do that. I'm sure there are others, not as, in my opinion, palatable, but this is, this is what we're recommending.
Okay, any other discussion? I'm going to be supporting this when it comes back because of the fact that this is a safety issue. And I think you know, whenever these things come up, I ask, is this, is this a luxury or is this a necessity? And I, I see, you know, a gym floor that has exceeded its life and beginning to buckle, where all our kids are there. AG Wright's one of the, you know, largest schools in terms of percentage of capacity. That it would be remiss not to go forward with this. I, I do think it's unfortunate that we are incurring a cost of over a hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars because we're starting school early. And when we took that vote, you know, we were not told this is going to be a cost. And I remember on many occasions, when we were discussing starting school before Labor Day, you know, what's the cost going to be? We talked about the buses. We talked about air conditioning. We talked about other things. And no one even thought about the fact that we have this multimillion dollar contract that's, you know, going to cost us a lot more to finish. So that's done, but I, I have to say I'm disappointed that this wasn't brought to our attention because it could have been a factor, you know, in, in that decision to start school, you know, early. But this will be coming back to us for, for action at the next meeting. All right, the last item on the information agenda is the revised proposed new policy twenty-four twenty gender identity and expression. We've heard a lot of comments about this this evening. Is there anything that the board wants to, to discuss on this at this point? It's, it's not going to be coming back to us for action at the next meeting? Or does the board want to just not put this on the agenda again until we're ready to have discussion? Did you have anything, Ms. Hazard wanted to start? You can go next.
Okay. I think I, what I would like to say is I'm supportive, Ms. Healy, of what you were saying. I think this is something we need to say and we need to have. Now, I know Fairfax County, when they did this, they had a lot of reach out and, and stuff that was done, but it was specifically for this. What I heard a lot tonight was fear and many other emotions. I think I'll just leave it at that. That maybe this does need to be a broader discussion with facilitation, not all by us. Of course, we are on the, somewhat on the front lines to help our community, to be honest. And I would be supportive of a separate type of meeting or public hearing or something about this policy. So I just wanted to say, I haven't fleshed it out yet, but kind of listening tonight, I think that might be beneficial to not just the board members, but maybe to the community at large.
Did you have something to say?
Basically, I was going to say that, you know, it, it's hard to separate, you know, your constituents because you have many constituents, and I understand where Dwayne Cosco was coming from. But within those communities and your constituents, there are those individuals that are discriminated against. So you have to keep that in mind, that that is part of the population, that is also part of your constituent base. In addition, you, you mentioned it, and so that you, Trish, that, and we talked about it, having a public hearing that we hear of more individuals may or may not change anybody's mind, including parents that are concerned. I had four kids that are raised in Stafford County schools, and yes, they were discriminated against and, and bullied and everything else. Not only for the color of their skin, but sometimes for the way they looked. And, and you know, as a concerned parent, I, I know how it feels. It's not about pulling a minority group above one another because, yeah, you know, LBGQ, the group moved ahead, for example, of the black race, and we're still a minority. The word minority strikes me every time I hear that word. I do not like the word minority. I think we're all, should be equal individuals. It's not about a minority or majority. But we need to look at this. We need to decide, either with clinical as well as with lawyers, look at it where we could not necessarily appease everyone, but do the right thing. So hopefully we get to that in the future.
Yeah, Ms. Healy?
You asked about what our preference was. I would prefer that this, that Dr. Kizner continue to make the improvements that we've all requested before it comes back to us again. But before it gets released to the public, I would certainly appreciate being updated on any significant changes to it so that we are prepared, we know what is in it before the public knows what's in it. I think that would be helpful to all of us when our constituents are communicating with us and gearing up to when we do have to, you know, read, read this, consider it, and then vote on it. So I think that's going to be important.
Yes, Ms. Decatur? No, no, I'm just looking to see who else has something to say before we announce our next meetings.
Yeah, I just, I have a couple of questions. I actually feel a little bit differently about the, the public input. I, I don't think that we need to rush anything. I realize that we've gone from zero to sixty and, you know, in point two. So I understand that a lot of people need some time to digest what they're reading, figure out what that means for their children moving forward. But I don't necessarily agree that personally, we need to hold public forums because, to be honest with you, I, I think we're going to continue to hear a lot of, a lot of the same, what we heard this evening. And, and I'm not saying that's a bad thing, and I'll sit through it if, if, if that's what we need to do. I'll listen to it forever. But I do feel that we would be hearing a lot of the same information over and over again. I, I personally, and what I've been asking for from the beginning, because as a very conservative parent, I didn't understand this. And I took time to sit down with a lot of different people and ask questions. And it's been over a year now that I've been doing that. From the very beginning, I've been asking for some education because for me, it really helped for me to understand, not the science. Science doesn't dictate how a person feels. And as human beings, we're not always able to understand what another person feels either. So for me, I had to kind of step out of my shoes, put myself in someone else's shoes. I realize I'm rambling. I have an eight-month-old on sleep regression things right now, and I cannot think straight. So for me, I think it would be really important to have some, some public forums where people can go and not tell us what they've been saying over and over again, because I, I hear you and I understand your point. I understand your concerns about your daughters in the bathrooms. I understand your concerns about inclusive for everyone, all means all. I, I hear everyone loud and clear, and I, I really understand both sides. What I think we need to do now is come to a, a community event where we can, instead of regurgitating those things, we can ask questions and learn about what others are experiencing and maybe come together and find a common ground. Otherwise, we're just going to be listening back and forth and, and being a little, well, I don't want to call names, but maybe a little bit bullheaded as to our sides. So that would be my suggestion on that note. Because we, we do need to move forward with something. Our, our teachers deserve guidance. Our students deserve guidance. They need it. They, they need to be able to understand what they're talking about, what they can and cannot say. You know, our, our teachers just don't know. And for me, that's really important, that they're going to a place every single day where they work and they, they're not sure how to talk about this or what they're allowed to say. So that's, that's a big deal in addition to our students' safety and security, mental well-being. There's a lot we need to address here. And, okay, I've said it all. Thanks. Oh, I did have one question. Dr. Kizner, in your notes to us, it says, "I'm still soliciting further comments at this time." So I, I was just kind of wondering, what is your plan moving forward? What do you, who are you still chatting with and what about?
I appreciate that. So just so you know who I've met with so far. So I've met with all of the principals. Some of the principals met with student groups. And I got feedback from the principals. And truthfully, I, I feel very comfortable saying it, many spoke, and everyone thought this is the right time, and they're supportive, okay? Those, those high school principals that spoke to student groups, what you heard tonight from the students is what you would have heard if they came to speak. The Equity, Opportunity, Diversity Committee, I think, based on that term and the members of that committee. Oh, yeah, oh, thank you. I forget that. They were, again, very, they were supportive. Tomorrow, I think, yeah, tomorrow. Tomorrow I have the Staff Advisory Committee. They have received what you have. Some have already submitted some questions for me to be prepared for tomorrow. And the Parent Advisory, which is two parents from every school, we will also be meeting tomorrow. So I will gain that feedback. What I will do, so I really like that, what Ms. Healy asked us to do, whenever we get a comment, I just forward, and you guys forward. So I think we all know what we're getting that way. What I will do is compile, unfiltered, and so you don't feel like I'm spitting it one way, the comments that I'm hearing from the four groups that I just mentioned. Mr. Haran, based on a comment last meeting, we are collecting, I think, thirteen or fourteen schools. Maybe it's gotten better. The bathroom situation, we're, we're doing that. As you know, we, the comment, so there was a comment made tonight that's already made me think of a change, and I'll just mention it now. The gentleman is right who mentioned it, or the woman, I forget who stated it. Question about if a high school student was uncomfortable, it, the current language says, doesn't say shall, that the principal shall talk to them. And I don't think it should be subjective. And I'll just make this last comment, because, because this is what I've been hearing from a lot of staff members as I walk the hallways and talk to them. They're looking for some direction. They're looking for clarity. And I recognize you are all elected by those eighteen and older. And I'm not saying this, and I hope it doesn't come out the wrong way. I am paid by everybody who lives in this community, so I respect that. But I think as the educational leader, I may see my constituent group a little different. I'm just being very honest with you. I see it as the twenty-nine thousand children and the forty-five hundred staff members we have. That doesn't by any means suggest that I minimize the importance of all the feedback. And I do want to thank people because I think this conversation has been remarkably respectful. Okay? I have not, this is a difficult and emotional topic. And I think what, whatever your opinion of, of this policy, people's comments, I have learned and I have valued and respected. And the changes that I've put forward for tonight was a reflection of the comments that you made at the last meeting. And it's that gentleman, the first time anybody ever has to shake my hand, from comments that people in the audience have made. So why I don't, part of, truthfully, I don't want to see this to be, we're six months, a year, two years from now. People say, where are we? Okay? I do, I just have to say, Ms. Decatur's suggestion is one that I would ask you to consider. I think maybe having a forum with people that meet whatever criteria we could determine as professionals to give all of us, from the medical, psychological, law, and maybe others, I don't know, an opportunity to hear, so you're fully informed, I think has some value. I already shared, and I know I take criticism, and I'll take it again. I don't know, I think you guys are offering a lot of public opportunities. And I think, again, I'm not sure we'll hear, we'll hear more. I'm not sure we'll hear different. Okay? And there's nothing wrong with giving people chances to express themselves. I just feel uncomfortable. This is my issue. So I own this issue. I feel uncomfortable that parents and children, parents of transgender children and transgender children have to find themselves defending themselves. Okay? And I, I don't know if they, if they feel that way. I'm just telling you how I feel. I've never asked them that. Okay? So, so I, as, I don't feel like I would be in a position to offer you a final policy recommendation in the next two meetings, and that, because I want to compile. But I think Ms. Decatur's suggestion has a lot of value, so you could get a better sense of what maybe other school divisions who have adopted. Yes, it is true in Virginia, but by no means are we first in the country. There are plenty of school divisions that have adopted almost very similar wording to this policy and other policy. And some are not that far. We just got to go over the Beltway so we can listen from Maryland and other places. So anyway, I, I do, and I just wanted to say last thing. It's late for me. It's late for all of us. I don't know, I think it was Mr. Acosta. I do get, want to thank you. You had an opportunity, I worked for you. If, if the four out of you or seven out of you said, no, write it down and put it, put in your drawer, leave it alone, then that's what it would have ended up being. So I really do think, whatever the outcome happens, the conversation's been very healthy. And, and I, and I do applaud you for letting this to move forward. And I don't want anyone to believe that we're trying to rush it. And I think we want to do it right. But I don't want to be the superintendent that really feel. And I think we wanna do it right, but I don't wanna be the superintendent that really feels like, I'd rather you take a vote and if it doesn't pass, it doesn't pass. But I think, I mean, I want it to pass, but I don't want, I, I think, my hope is that we have something in place so we could start working with our staff and community on, on a policy and how to implement it.
But if it doesn't pass, then, then you don't have a policy.
If, if I may just kind of, can, when, when we started the equity and diversity, there was, there was not even any talk and, and several of the, the people who were spoken, right? There, there wasn't any talk of this policy until we recognized that our staff don't know what to do during this incident. So, so that's where the policy came about. But, but we've been talking about this for, like I said, over a year since I've been meeting with parents and stakeholders who I now call my friends. And the, the very first thing that, that we, we don't need a policy to have education, to have, you, you know, to, to teach our, to help our, our teachers and our staff members feel more comfortable talking about it. Because I'll tell you, the first time I sat down in a meeting with a, a parent of a transgender student, I really felt like I was walking on eggshells because I didn't even know what it meant to be a transgender boy or a transgender girl. Does, what does that mean? What does, what sex does that mean you are now? You know, so many people have so many questions and, and, you know, you can Google, but our staff deserves some, some training, some, some formal. And it doesn't have to say, "You have to do this, you have to do that, this student has to do this." It, it can just be, you know, educating.
No, I, I, I agree with you. I guess where I'm going with that a little bit is what happened in another school division in Virginia, where they did not have a policy. And we have middle and high school students that have five, maybe eight teachers in their schedule. And you could train, but with the accept, with the understanding of training is that people are gonna do the same thing. That's why you go through training. And if a student, a fourteen or seventeen-year-old has, and we, and, and that may be the, that may be the outcome. It's gonna be up to the seven of you. But if, if some could do it, handle it this way and others could handle it that way, I'm not, the sensitivity, yes. We should do that for every child. I totally agree with you. And I, you know, I don't comment and none of us comment, but we cannot kid ourselves. What happened in that gymnasium was lack of clarity, okay? If anybody thinks otherwise, then, then, then they really did not listen to everything that took place. So, I'm just suggesting that we, we have a policy that's putting forward. We're amending it when, when, when it seems practical and doesn't lose the, the main intent. I just don't feel like if, you know, I don't know when the right time will be. And, and, and I know when the right time will be for me to ask you to take action. You could point, you could choose that, that time to say, "No, we're not ready." And that's fine. I did what I had to do and I respect greatly what you have to do.
Can I make a comment in terms of the public co- the public forum? The only reason why I wanted that public forum is simply that there are some individuals that work that, that can't take time out to be here, like all the same people that come here every time there is a board meeting. There's individuals that work up north, just like I do, and they would like to be here. They don't wanna just necessarily see it on TV. They haven't been involved. And so, why would we deny them the right to speak on this topic, on, on either side? And there's not just two sides, there's several sides here.
You could have a public forum, I guess, then you may be suggesting that we'll have it during the day. I mean, I, I'm hoping it's not gonna be some, we go into an auditorium and just, you know, just, I don't know. You do, you guys do what you feel like is the most appropriate.
Dr. Chase had a comment she wanted to make.
I did, yeah.
Another round?
Yeah. So, I, I also like Ms. Keaters' idea of having something where there can be more information for the public rather than just hearing the, the same people speaking and all that. But with respect to the policy, I, I would like more information. Maybe I need more education about one particular aspect of it, which is field trips. And so, I, I'm curious as to whether that is consistent in all the other areas of the country where they've implemented this policy. And, and are there concerns, what, what might those concerns be about field trips? And I just, I just need more information as I'm trying to kind of process this. And that's all I have to say.
I, I just wanna raise one question and I appreciate everybody that comes. Even if it's the same people, I think they have something to add every time they come and speak to us. And I think there is a benefit for everyone to hear because if, you know, we're sitting here listening, but the whole audience is listening too. And, and it's very often you go, "Wow, that, hadn't thought about that," or, you know, "That's something to consider." So, I'm not saying we're gonna sway people or change people's minds, but I think to a certain extent, having the opportunity to hear and listen to other points of view opens our minds. And it lets us know, you know, at, at least some of the, the basis for, you know, the, the emotion involved in it. But I have, I have a question and it has to do with, and not, not for an answer this evening, but, you know, concern I have is what role, is, is the role of the parents here? You know, when we're talking about minors, you know, if, if a student is over eighteen, they're an adult. Legally, they're an adult, you know, they're, they can act on their own. But I'm, I'm not sure how much we've addressed the role of the parent. You know, we're saying, "We're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, we're gonna do whatever." But the only communication with the parent is if there is a, a concern or a uncomfortableness or something like that. And that's something that I would like to, to see, maybe, how, how have other policies addressed that? Because I'm, you know, I, I, I have, I have grave concerns about the schools trying to take on a role, you know, that, you know, may not be theirs with respect to, you know, parenting. So, and, and I, I know there may be some disagreement about that, but that's, that's a concern I had in the beginning, I still have it. And I would, I would like to see it addressed at some point. And, and one thing I, I would ask this board, we, the next two months, we are gonna be rolling on this elementary school redistricting. And it's gonna take up, you know, a lot of time. There is going to be, I imagine, you know, based on what I saw tonight and we all saw it for the first time, a lot of public comment and input. So, I would suggest that we not try to deal with these on the same track. That's just, that's my suggestion. It's, you know, it, it's gonna be up to the board and it sounds like you're not gonna be ready next month anyway or.
No. And I, again, I, I, let me just make one last comment, which probably won't be my last. I do value what you just said, Ms. Healy, in the sense that I gain a greater, and I think, and I don't wanna speak for others, I think when we hear more people speak, we think about something that maybe we didn't think about before. And I do think we gain a greater sensitivity because, truthfully, I'm a parent of three daughters. I mean, I'm a superintendent, but I also am a parent of three daughters, okay? So, I'm not dismissive of any comments that parents who might raise a concern might have, okay? And so, I play the role of a superintendent, which I greatly appreciate, but I'm always a parent first. So, when I listen to comments, I learn and I gain a greater appreciation. I'm just trying in my mind, thinking, and maybe I'm thinking like we did the first redistricting meeting two weeks ago, where we had, you know, a few hundred people in the audience that was still the same time that we basically meet. So, if we're trying to gain more people, I would just ask, how do we design that where people who maybe are not able to come at five, seven o'clock on a Tuesday can come another time? And that's the only thing, but I still don't wanna lose sight of what Jamie, uh, Mr. Keater said because I think we're all at, I'll call you Jamie, you call me Sky.
After ten o'clock.
Yeah, yeah. But I just think.
We don't have to be formal.
I think that would help.
Close the bedtime.
And I'll, and I could reach out to some other school divisions that are just less than two hours away and see if they would be willing. And maybe you'd be willing, if you wanted to, to speak to their school board members so you could get a peer-to-peer understanding. Anyway, what we could talk a lot more about. That's why we're not ready.
I have one question, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
And it's about the locker room, that was one that came to mind. And in terms of, I, I know, I should know, having four kids, I do recall paying for a middle school uniform. Do they change out in high school and elementary?
No, okay, so I've learned a lot about changing out, okay?
Because my whole thing is, I don't know if we have to do that.
No, no, you, you have a self-imposed policy, which is another conversation down the road. But sixth grade, no, optional. Seventh, eighth grade, required to dress out. High school, no, optional.
Elementary, no.
No, no.
So, why do we have that?
I don't know, that's a conversation we could have, I, that happened.
What I'm saying is that, that is something that parents are concerned about. This dress out in this locker room, you know, they can't see, even though the kids are, you know, okay and they hide or they're not hide. But I think if we eliminate that piece out, that concern with parents is removed and, and we need to look at that, so. And it saves the parents twenty bucks, if it's still twenty.
It's probably gone up. All right, any other comments before we announce the, no, all right, we're not done yet though, don't, don't leave. The next public meeting of the school board is this Saturday at eight-thirty a.m. It's a work session. We will start with our FOIA training and we will not start the meeting until everyone's there. So, we all need the training. We're gonna, well, we're all gonna get the training. So, please try to be on time because we'll be holding everybody up if we're not there. And the, the schedule right now has us going to one. I know Ms. Hazard wants to go somewhere that afternoon, but if we're delayed starting, we're gonna be delayed getting out. Then, it's not on the little agenda here, but next Tuesday at Drew Middle School at seven o'clock is gonna be our first town hall meeting on the elementary school redistricting. Next Thursday at Stafford Middle School. And the next week, we have one at HH Pool. You're not restricted to the school that's closest to you. You're not restricted to one meeting. Anyone is welcome to come to any of those redistricting meetings at seven o'clock. All right, now, do I have a motion to go into closed session, please?
Motion to go into closed session.
No, you have to read the little blurb. Here. It's, it's here.
I've already closed out, I'm sorry.
Here. I think it's, I think it's gonna come up here. Oh, no, that's the wrong line.
You got it? Yeah. That's the chairs, the vice chairs, that's the vice chair job, I'm sorry.
If you've closed it out, I move that the Stafford County School Board can be in a closed meeting pursuant to Section two, point two, three, seven, eleven, A1 of the Code of Virginia to discuss or consider personnel matters.
All right, do we need a second, Missy? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. We will be quick.